Yeah, yeah.
Sorry.
Did you get the drive-through work out?
What's that?
Did you get the drive-through work out?
Is any recording going?
There's a good one now.
Okay. Well, unfortunately, I have six thirty-one, so we're a minute late to get started here, but I guess we'll call the meeting for the planning and zoning commission to order here on February fifteenth of two thousand twenty-three. We go ahead and do the roll call and I guess, are you running the minutes there, Mr. Richardson?
Oh, yeah, 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 we'll do it. You ready? Mr. Harriman?
Here.
Mr. Swank?
Here.
Ms. Carney?
Here.
Dustin is out. And Mr. Jackson, here, I'm sorry. I'm horrible, your last name.
Jess.
Jess Wicks. See, I said it.
All right, well, let's go to the approval of our minutes, just under nine months. I think we can get our May eighteen of two thousand twenty-two minutes.
Second.
Okay. Wait, can you try to make this, you weren't there.
Oh, I'm sorry, I cannot second, right.
I'll second it.
I got that switched, I apologize.
All right, so we've got three present from that one there. So, Mr. Jess Wicks?
Yes.
Mr. Swank?
Yes.
Mr. Harriman?
Yes.
And Ms. Carney?
Abstained.
Okay, and now we can move on to the approving the minutes from our meeting on January eighteenth of two thousand twenty-three.
I move to approve the January eighteenth, um, twenty twenty-three minutes.
Second.
Mr. Swank?
Yes.
Mr. Harriman?
Abstained.
Mr. Jess Wicks?
Yes.
Ms. Carney?
Yes.
Okay. I think we actually got our minutes all cleared finally.
I know, finally.
Um, okay, uh, let's move down, uh, next I'd be, uh, Communication, Planning and Zoning, Ms. Richardson.
All right, uh, real quick, just a couple of things. We had, uh, council had first reading of Wilcox Communities Pre-Annexation. So, the first reading was Monday night. So, that went pretty good. Uh, March fifteenth, our next meeting is already stacked up to be a busy one. Uh, we will have Perry Pike Commercial Development coming in to talk about their concept. Uh, we'll have Darby Station Phase Four, Sections One and Two, final development plan in Platte. And then we will also have Wilcox in for their preliminary development plan and their rezoning. So, uh, the public hearing's been set and advertised everything for that meeting, so we are all set for next month. And then I also, uh, do want to talk to the board about adding some work sessions the next couple of months at least, before the meetings, the week before, if possible, just to get more of the zoning care discussion under underway.
Okay.
And that's all I got.
All right, thank you. Uh, BCA?
We did not have a meeting last night. There was no application, so nothing to report.
And, Ms. Carrney?
I attended last week the Economic Development Strategic Planning, um, roundtable discussion kickoff to working on that plan, um, that Mr. Stanford ordered, organized. Um, and it was very interesting to talk about, um, with other local business owners and community members about what their vision for our economic development for Plain City's future is. So, that's kind of what I've been, um, working on of helping to get committees, keeping them filled, and, um, also on this economic development strategic planning.
Okay. Do we need to add about another committee that was filled?
Oh, yes, I, I think, yes, we're, uh, working on getting that them filled.
All right. Um, okay, with that, uh, move into public comments. Have anybody signed up?
I didn't sign up for that.
All right, um, with that, I guess we move into whole business.
I don't think we got anything old business.
Nothing old, perfect. And I guess that moves into our new business. Looks like we have one item here, MSD twenty-three dash one, minor subdivision at Zero Village Boulevard, uh, with applicant, uh, Aaron Miller on behalf of, uh, the crap.
I don't think he's here tonight. So, it'd be up to you, I guess, if we, if we, it's a lot split, we can go ahead and discuss it, it's, it's up to you with the, with the applicant not being here, which, how you will proceed with, uh, moving forward with that. It means, I mean, it's pretty, pretty straightforward.
Pretty straightforward, so, I mean.
Okay.
Can I ask a dumb question?
So, uh, what we have here is a, uh...
Can I ask a question?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
All right. Is the lot that we're talking about breaking, that, maybe just break this down for me, it's, we're breaking this into three lots, is that?
So, this is the front lot, you're just right outside our front lot?
Yes, that's it, okay, that's what I was thinking it was, okay.
And, so what is being proposed is split into three.
Yeah.
Now, it, each of those lots do meet the requirement lot size for B two.
Okay.
Um, I had advised the, the property owner, though, that it, they're gonna be hard to build on, to put anything on. So, especially that northern lot, there's, without a variance for every single thing, it's, it's gonna be pretty unbreakable. If there's future plans and, and, I'm not a hundred percent clear on the plan, he did, he did mention possibly, uh, adjoining those to the parcels eventually that are, they back up to. So, as far as the straight lot splits, they meet the lot definition, um, in requirements, they're just, they're not, they're not gonna be pretty tough to build on. But that, that may not be the intent, I...
Right. And he's utilizing the existing lots of the adjacent properties in order to...
To test.
Maybe that's, yeah.
I, it, the only thing that he mentioned once was the, the other two lots along the northern part of the south, on the south side of Perry Pike, potentially combining all three of those lots into one parcel, which would make sense for that third one. Uh, the two, the middle one, the south one there, um, I mean, you can build, it could be very small and require
Yeah.
Some, some stuff, so.
Okay.
And, you know, that's, that's really all the information I got from the applicant as far as future uses for this.
And, like I said, kind of the satellite overview looked like they kind of sort of like split line lined up with, um, kind of the one part, kind of where the car wash area is.
Yeah.
And then...
Yes, it is.
Kind of with the office complex.
It, it is pretty much directly off those, those lot lines.
And for his future sites or businesses and the, the traffic flow out onto Village Boulevard as well, coming around the corner there.
Yeah, so, um, I've had Randy, uh, just take a quick look, you know, just potential of the three lots, potentially three accesses onto Village Boulevard. Um, you know, for the size of those lots and what could potentially be there would likely not be a traffic generator much at all. Yeah. That's really it, well, now.
I don't have an issue.
No, I, yeah.
If he can't build on it, then he's gonna have to do, he's gonna have to mine the lot stack together, at least, at least the bottom two.
Yeah.
The southern two.
So, yeah, regardless, whatever he has to do, he's still gonna have to come in for our site plan, so.
Yeah.
Uh, all those steps are still ahead of, so splitting the lots for whatever purposes is step one for them, so.
Yeah.
We'll see what follows.
I mean, and you, you said you already communicated that it's gonna be tough to build on, he's gonna have to look for variances, we don't.
Yeah.
We're not in the habit of, you know, granting variances just because of...
Exactly, i- i- and what I would suggest, just as more of a record, is if this is approved tonight, just the condition is that the property owner is aware of the building limitations on these lots.
Right.
Just so it's on record that he's, that he has been told more than, were the ones.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I would agree, just that will, we could do into kind of almost just what you have to sort of the staff recommendation, um, at kind of that last, that paragraph you had there. I don't have anything else.
I move to approve MSD dash twenty-three dash one.
A second. Is that, is that you or?
Right.
Was that with the condition that?
Oh.
That he listed in the, in the staff report?
Yes, yes, with staff recommendations.
Oh.
Thank you, Mr. Jess Wicks.
All right, Mr. Jess Wicks?
Yes.
Mr. Swank?
Yes.
Ms. Carney?
Yes.
And Mr. Harriman?
Yes.
And motion passes?
Okay, uh, well, that takes us to our next, uh, topic, the discussion items, our first parts of presentation by Virginia Homes.
Thank you very much. Uh, my name is Charles Rumah, I'm the president of Virginia Homes. And I'd first like to start out by saying thank you for allowing us the opportunity to come before you and, and hear about our new project, Beechy Farms. Before we get started, I just want to tell you a little bit about Virginia Homes and who we are. Uh, our company was founded in nineteen fifty-three here in central Ohio. Uh, the company was named after the founder's wife, Virginia, hence Virginia Homes in central Ohio. Uh, my father, Charlie Rumah, we're here, uh, purchased the company in nineteen seventy-five. And I was fortunate to take over the company in two thousand eight during the Great Housing Recession. Over the last almost seventy years now, it's hard to believe it's been that long. We've built over fifteen thousand homes in the central Ohio area. We've developed thousands of lots in, in hundreds of communities. This includes three golf course communities, Wedgewood Golf and Country Club and Powell, uh, the Jefferson Country Club and Blacklick. And we were also involved in the Westchester Golf Course in Canal Winchester. Uh, most recently, we've been involved in Dublin at the, with the redevelopment of the Riviera Golf Course. Uh, our new project, which you'll see coming out of the ground, which is right down the street, um, it's at the corner of Post Road and Highland Croy. It's called Highland Glen, there'll be a hundred lots there. So, we've been very active in the development community. We, we've been interested in the area of Plain City for a long time and, and we really are excited about this opportunity. I, I think, in all of these developments that we've been a part of, when we look at what we're doing here at Beechy Farms, it's, it's one of, if not the most exciting projects we've been involved in for a lot of reasons. First, the Beechy family, some of whom we've known for over twenty-five years. We've had the privilege of getting to know some of the rest of the family over the last few weeks and months, and we're, we're just very excited to be in a partnership with them. We're also excited about the ability to create a development that will be as, as, and, as important for, for Plain City itself as it will be for the residents that are living within the community. And, and as we get into the plan, I'll, I'll, I'll go through that in more detail. We want this to be kind of a legacy development, something that we can all be proud of, something that, uh, you know, from a city's perspective, from the development perspective, and certainly from the Beechy family's perspective, that we do something that, uh, we can all be proud of. So, as far as the development, we started this process last fall, once we reached an agreement with the Beechy family. And our first course of action was to sit down with Derek Hutchinson and Jason Stanford to go through what Plain City we want to see here. You know, what do we want to do with this property, what, what from the city's point of view is most important? And we left that meeting with, with pretty much a, an agreeable, uh, course of action, that a mixed-use type of property would be best suited for this use. So, we got, got busy on a plan, and we put a plan together, and we shared that plan with Derek and, and the team, and we had another meeting, I think, I don't know, if it was towards the end of December or January.
Yeah, right, right before Christmas.
Maybe right before the holidays, and, and at that meeting, we sat down with Derek and Jason, and we had Jody and the Fire Chief and Police Chief and the Parks Department, we had everybody in the room. And I think there was a strong consensus that we were on the right track with this plan, and that we should keep pursuing this course of action and, and, and that's why we're here this evening. The plan itself, Derek, if you want to go to the plan, what, what we're looking at is a hundred and thirty-eight acres of relatively flat farmland, actually, just down and across the street here. They're approximately forty-four hundred feet of frontage on the State Route forty-two. On the western portion of the site, there's a large stand of trees, uh, and, including many, uh, specimen oak, oak trees, which we'll talk more about in our open space plan. Beyond that, if you look on the western portion, running north and south, are some power lines. So, what we've come up with is this mixed-use concept with a strong focus on commercial and retail. And if you look at the left side of the plan along Route forty-two, we have A one, A two, A three, and A four. Really making up are the commercial and retail aspect. There are two out parcels on the, uh, far northern portion, A one, and A four to the south, those would be kind of a larger commercial use, maybe a, a grocery or daycare or drugstore or something of that nature. The rest of the, uh, buildings are inline retail, could be coffee shops, sandwich shops, insurance agent, you name it, any neighborhood-type convenience. One of the key components here is the way this site lays out, that commercial aspect really creates a nice and natural buffer between State Route forty-two and the rest of the residential components within this, within the site. So, the primary entrance is through the center, we have a boulevard entry going through all of the commercial and some of the residential areas that leads directly into the open space, which really lines up well. If you want to go, do you have the slide showing the western view? So, this is looking along State Route forty-two to the west, with a boulevard entry going straight back, and you see some of the larger trees in the back, which are some of those specimen oak trees that we were talking about just a minute ago. The great part about this open space, it's, it's probably, that park itself is probably about eighteen to nineteen acres. And it contains all of the tree growth on the site, probably eighty-five to ninety-five percent of all the trees on the site are gonna be contained within our open space, including many of those large oak trees. So, as we're driving down that boulevard, that open space is right there. All four of the different types of uses of residential properties are fronting onto that park, so they're all gonna have access to it. And it's really centrally located with all of the community. Connectivity is gonna be the key aspect of what we are looking for in this community, with bike paths and systems to get, to make this entire site walkable. So, if you look, uh, you know, we'll have a, a path going up and down forty-two, and we'll go all the way across. We're hoping to have a conversation at some point, if we progress down the road, with the Darby Fields HOA, to, to make a connection to the path that's down by the elementary school. So, really, from Chilla Coffee, you can take a bike path, you'll have bike path access all the way through up to the retail component, so it really becomes a part of the community. Moving around the site, if you want to go back to that overall site. Moving around the site in the northern portion is C one. The light purple to the left there. That's C one, that would consist of ninety-five townhomes, these would be three-to-five unit buildings, uh, approximately fifteen hundred square feet per unit, uh, with a attached single-car garage. Directly to the west, yes.
Two stories?
Two-story. Directly to the west is D one. That would consist of sixty detached aged targeted properties, I think the easiest way to envision what that would look like is something similar to what an EPCOM would be building today. Um, you know, just a ranch unit, uh, on slab, in, in that area of D one, and that would consist of sixty units. D two and D three to the south are the larger single-family areas, that would consist of two hundred and twenty-five units. I think that would be similar to what you're seeing in Darby Fields or Darby Station, kind of some of the residential components that are going on in the city right now. B one to the southeast of the property would consist of three hundred and forty apartment units. Overall, there are seven hundred and twenty units on a hundred and thirty-eight acres, uh, including twelve acres of that being used for the commercial and retail component. And, you know, I don't want to oversell this, but I think the overall theme and the, the concept here is to do something similar to like a, a bridge park, like a mini bridge park is the way I would try to explain it. And the reason I say that is because it would create walk, many different residential opportunities that would be walkable to all sorts of retail and open space, right? So, you have bike paths and systems and connectivity that really join the entire community, not only the folks that live within the community, but the entire city of Plain City. We want to see this be a destination point in Plain City, and really make it a, a legacy-type development. I think setting the tone for how development should be done in Plain City is what we're trying to achieve, and we really would love some input from you all to, to get a gauge on where we are and, and what direction we're heading to see if we're on the right track. So, thank you again for allowing us this opportunity to bring this to you, and, and I'd love to hear any comments or thoughts on, on the process so far.
Uh, real quick, I'll just go with the, so for the townhomes, you said going two-story with that, over on the apartment side, is that gonna be two-story as well?
Uh, the apartments would be two to three stories.
Two to three stories?
Correct, similar to what you're saying built around town these days.
What does the EN stand for in D one? I kept seeing that EN.
So, that, I think the E is all of the open space.
Empty nester, so, so it's designed to be like a over sixty or whatever type product that you gear towards, empty nester, I guess it's sort of that.
Did you say D one?
He, you know, he said EN, so in, in section D one, or single-family detached with an EN following. And he was asking what the EN designation is.
We're not gonna get into age restricted, I think age targeted is really what we're after. Yeah.
And so, how did you decide on those, on that style for that area? I mean, obviously, you're backing up to, um, other single-family residential, um, and, and those homes in that area are, you know, four or five hundred thousand dollars, and you're talking about the empty nester, how did you decide where to position the, the types of products that you're offering?
Well, I think it all starts from State Route forty-two, and, and trying to move in and create a, you know, you're, you're dealing with a state highway, so trying to create that buffer, that's where the, the, uh, commercial piece fit in. Uh, looking at, you know, existing residential, the density and uses of this are not too far, I mean, the townhomes are a little different, but we have to create some sort of transition. I think the empty nester piece, um, just seemed to fit there. Uh, I don't think the density is gonna be a lot greater than some of the stuff to the north. I think, uh, when you look at combining all four pieces together, the single-family really has, I mean, it seems like a natural existence where the Darby Fields connection comes down into the empty fields, that that probably would continue at some point. And we'd be able to tie our residential, so that'll all be kind of a continuous path. And I think we wanted to make sure we centered everything, centered the park, so all those types of uses were, were surrounding that park. So, that was kind of the mindset.
It, it's expected that those homes, patio homes, will be in the four to five hundred thousand home range. That's where they are right now, that's where EPCOM's been building very successfully. So, we expect that it'll be at least that by the time we get this project anyway.
And that should be noted, too, when we talk about the variety of products, it, it's hard to build anything, even attached for less than three fifty, but we would like to start something for sale in that three fifty range. And really see this go up to maybe six hundred and fifty or seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And I think that, I mean, obviously, the prices are going up, things are changing, but we want to see a, a wide variety of opportunities available within this community.
I know this is very preliminary, um, has Derek kind of shared with you our, our pending zoning rewrite, and are you envisioning that these lots would meet the requirements that we're looking at?
Yeah, we've talked about, uh, shared the, the draft and everything, where we're going with, with the draft. Of course, we've got, used to have more discussion to go, you know, to finalize that, but, uh...
Right.
I, I think it's still lies up pretty close to what we're looking at.
Now, like, I was looking at some of the percentages here, and, and I know it's real early, but, you know, the, the open space, it's sixteen percent. I know most of our PUDs that we do are twenty-five percent minimum, and, you know, as we look at some of that open space, you know, the E, you know, E four, E two, the power lines, I mean, that's all under, you know, non-buildable, so I know that would count as part of the, the open space, so I know some of that open space requirement, that percentage would drop. So, we're shopping, you know, shy by quite a bit on, on the open space requirements. Um, just, you know, in, in the twenty-four hour span, looking through, just trying to pare down.
I didn't do the math, but you require twenty-five percent in most places, uh, mo- most developments that we've seen are coming in in the fifty percent.
I said, I know Darby Station's at fifty-four, fifty percent, and, you know, so even going the conservative, um, or, I'm sorry, not conservative, um, conservation, conservation, thank you.
I, I was gonna comment on that, but, um, because we're in the Darby watershed, you've got to make sure you're getting groundwater recharge. One way to do that is to increase that open space, do that conservation subdivision type of approach. There's other ways to do it, but that's, that's one of the best ways. So, just keep that in mind as you're laying this out, you know, taking advantage of open spaces to, to take, to get that groundwater recharge.
Yeah, we, we certainly are cognizant of the open space, you know, we didn't have an exact number of, of what was required, I don't know if there is a requirement that's written down, uh, we didn't see that or when we had these conversations, but...
For open space?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, it's twenty-five percent is the minimum. Our current code, I think, is twenty right now, the minimum is twenty. Our current code. Our current code's twenty?
I, I think we looked at this PUDs with twenty-five.
Oh, well, it's for PUDs, yes. Or PR PUDs. I, I mean, I, I think overall, I mean, I like the, the park in the center, I like the connectivity with the trails, I love the idea of connecting to Darby Fields. Um, I don't know, you know, how that works, um, but, I mean, I, I love that idea, I like the general layout, the buffer, um, from, obviously, from US forty-two to commercial to multifamily to single-family, and it all makes sense. Have, have we talked at all about, with them, about the US forty-two corridor study that's been done, wanting to limit curb cuts? They're trying to add three, there's already one just north of them, there's, you know, a couple across the street, there's, there's a lot of, I see a lot of infrastructure, uh, being impacted, uh, here, meaning center turn lanes on forty-two, uh, to turn lanes in, you know, the right turns in, uh, I, I don't know, I see a, a lot that would be needed on forty-two to, um, to accommodate. And like I said there, I, and I don't, I don't know all the particulars about the corridor plan, but there, you know, there was a study that was done, maybe two, twenty-sixteen, does that sound right? Uh, sometime.
Yep.
And, um, you, you're adding three additional entrances, um, and then you're, you're talking... Where's the fourth one?
One, two, three.
Oh, the, this arrow down here is an entrance?
Yeah.
I see, I did realize that, I was just looking at the dot.
Yeah.
Uh, so, yeah, four, four entrances in, um, and obviously, seven hundred and twenty units, you gotta ha- have enough entrances to accommodate. But I just, I, I s- I see a lot of infrastructure improvements being required or necessary on...
Absolutely, I mean, we're certainly gonna have a full traffic study done, and whatever the recommendations and requirements are, we need this to be a safe place to get in and out of as much as anybody else, and, and as far as the connectivity, you know, that's, that's... As far as the connectivity, you know, that's, that's part of the reason why we're here, right? If we only can get so many curb cuts and we need to plan around that and, and make it work. I think there's probably an opportunity to eliminate at least one and make the connection to the south tie in with the next connection going north and make that all one. So there's certainly ways that we could work around that and, and make that work.
And I think hopefully, I mean, with these developments, I would assume, you know, forty-two is not going to be fifty-five miles an hour coming, coming through. So I think we'll have, you know, be able to get that.
It, it depends. I mean, we, we have, we suffer with this problem right now because we don't have both sides of the road annexed in. And we're at fifty miles an hour. And right now what they're proposing, there's, uh, parts of the, the west side of the road that won't be annexed in. So, I, I mean, there's, you know, certainly going to be considerations for that. We've, we've got varied speeds through there now, you know, fifty and fifty-five before you get to the nerve dust and where it changes to thirty-five.
Yeah.
And it's, it's just problematic.
We would anticipate a full, that boulevard entry would be signalized and turn lanes and the whole nine yards to make that, hopefully that would slow things down a little bit in front of the site.
Right. I, I would say, I, I would look at your northern edge, especially with how we're right up against the neighborhood there. Typically, we've seen developments come in against existing neighborhoods offer a pretty significant buffer. That, that helps that. Maybe by providing some of that in the future plan would, would help.
I mean, I like, you know, I think January was, when I wasn't here, you know, I sent the email. You know, one of the things I kind of talked about was, I like having the progression of, you know, kind of retail and then more like that townhome multifamily. You kind of work your way back into the subdivisions. You know, the, the downside is on the northern edge, it's not set up that way. So, you know, you're having, you know, basically townhomes, commercial right on the existing houses that are right there, you know, so. You know, I don't know if it's the buffer, kind of a little better blending with going into the existing neighborhood to the north, you know, just, I like the flow concept of, you know, but and, and your blend's going that way, but it's, I'm trying to picture it as a whole. As we piece, you know, north, south, east, west, getting that flow.
Yeah, and that kind of goes off of what, you know, we were saying on the D one section. And he said that, you know, the way that they've looked at it and designing it has been coming from forty-two moving eastward, right? But I agree with you. I, I think that, you know, we at least have to be cognizant of, you know, the north to south transition as well. And again, I, I don't know, you know, I mean, we've, we've got a lot of age targeted housing in the area. So I, you know, I'm familiar. I don't know what your product is going to look like. But, you know, when you, you know, I, I just, you know, again, being cognizant of the transition from those houses that, again, are in that four to five hundred thousand dollar range, transitioning to, um, you know, that age targeted, probably ranch-style homes. And I'm not saying it's bad. I'm just saying that we have to be cognizant of it so that we know that the transition is going to be, um, you know, beneficial not only to you as a developer, but to the existing property owners for the enjoyment of, of their, you know, their properties and so forth. So just being aware of that. And then, as Mr. Harriman said, the C one, um, section, again, I understand the transition east to west, or I'm sorry, west to east, uh, it, it certainly makes sense, commercial and then, you know, stepping down. But you then have the townhomes backed up to that other residential property. So it, it's something to at least be, for us to be cognizant of to see, you know, how that transition and what you do from a buffering standpoint to, you know, create, I guess to maintain, maybe not create, but to maintain, um, the, the enjoyment of those properties, property values and so forth. And I understand, you know, your father said, you know, the, the age target is going to be, you know, four or five hundred thousand dollars in itself. So, you know, I, I don't see a drastic change in home values based off of those home values. So, um, but again, being aware of it. You know, one other thing that we mentioned, that we mentioned before, and I don't know if Derek's mentioned, and obviously this is preliminary, you've got nothing that's, you know, that deep. But, um, they only do mailbox pods now here. I don't know if that's widespread, but here that's all that they do.
Yes.
Okay. So, yeah, just making sure that you're aware of that when you're planning your, your, your full, full plan.
Yeah, absolutely. When we get into more detail, we can design where those pods will be and make that accessible so it's easy for everybody. As far as the northern boundary is concerned, we've always been under the impression that we're going to have to do some sort of buffer. This plan doesn't really show anything significant a- as far as that goes. We're also, I mean, the other part of this, to the north of our commercial, that piece is also commercial.
Correct.
That backs up to a lot of those residential units.
Which we've had in here already, and we've had it in B C A also. So, yeah, we've talked extensively about, you know, the, the buffering there as well.
So certainly we're going to be consistent with whatever is decided there. And we'll come up with some ideas to create some buffer and we'll certainly sensitive to that, that aspect. You know, we, we try to match everything up as best we can, but we have to be cognizant of the overall plan at some level too. You know, the open space to the, the western side that backs up to Darby Fields is very convenient because that's all open space and probably a pond. We can't do that everywhere, but we can be cognizant of it enough to create the buffers that are necessary to join the, the properties.
Yeah, certainly. If you look at the residents on Red Knott Court there coming from Darby Field, they're going to love the area, you know, to some direction west of them. Whereas maybe some of the residents on the north side of your property, they may not love as much as the Red Knott Court resident, so.
I, I, I'm sorry. I think Mount, like, Mounting and Evergreens would go a long, long way in this plan.
So, um, you know, some of the other just quick numbers I was comparing to, you know, some of the, more of the housing density, um, you know, I got about two hundred and eighty-five units going on sixty-six acres compared to Darby Fields. There's two hundred and sixty-three units on ninety-two acres. So you're, uh, you know, I've, I've driven around, you know, some of the existing neighborhoods. I, I just went by through here today. Just was out in that area. It's like, yeah, I was sort of through it. Lovely houses. But the, the density, um, looking at these numbers, I, I, you know, you're saying six hundred plus thousand dollar houses back there. But I feel like they're going to have to be crammed in on top of each other. I just, I can't see, basically comparing your current product you have out there to fitting in with, um, you know, two hundred and eighty houses on sixty. I just don't, I don't see how that.
You know, density's a tricky issue. And you can sit here and we can talk about density. I think having the right densities in the right places is very important. And I think being close to the town center and being in proximity to what's going on and really the downtown area of Plain City, that's where you can afford some density. As you go out further, maybe that's where things need to be less dense. You know, density is not always a bad thing.
No.
Because it, it affords the ability to create housing at a reasonable price. It also allows the, the, the city to be able to maintain these areas without a huge burden. You can imagine if we did two units an acre and fifty percent open space, well, we're going to need a thousand acres to do that, to house the same amount of people. You're going to have four times the road, four times the sewer. Is that the most efficient way to, to grow? I, I think it's very important to be cognizant of the density issue and, and we want to make sure that we do what Plain City wants. It, it all has to work together. But I think we need to be understanding that, you know, part of this, the key of this plan is all the commercial and retail here. The most important factor of that being successful is having rooftops and people to support it. We all know we need a grocery store. We need some other conveniences here in Plain City. That stuff comes with growth and having some density right here is a, is a big step in making that happen. If, if it's not what the city wants, it's not what the city, you know, the village wants, that, that's okay. But we, we think it's, uh, it's important to look at having the right density in the right places and not doing, you know, not having conservation developments everywhere. You know, is that entirely necessary? I, I don't know. We have to be cognizant of the environment. We have to be cognizant of doing the right thing. We can't, you know, develop it the wrong way and pollute things and, and cause a problem. We want to be good stewards of the land, but we have to think about that a little bit more deeply and, and have a, a greater discussion about that.
Your input is really, really good to us. It, it'll help us regenerate this plan to meet some of your objections, some of your concerns. I, I, I'm already thinking about how we can solve the part up north and, and create more open space. And I, I think this is, this is great. I really appreciate your, uh, your speaking out and letting us know.
No, and, and I like kind of this open discussion coming here, you know, to, to, I mean, I, I like, I like the concept. I mean, it, it's nice, you know, just, um, you know, one, kind of going into traffic concern, just looking at, and I know some of it is just limited by the, the property itself. Is where you look at your, you know, just going off your numbers of, of your units. I mean, we're going to be talking somewhere in neighborhood of thirteen hundred to fifteen hundred residents total in there. So traveling in and out, you know, I, I know we got four, three or four cuts there on forty-two. Obviously the one made boulevard, but, uh, not necessarily to everybody going to, you know, school, but, you know, coming in and out of neighborhood. You know, the only other reliever you have is that connection on Hawthorne, which, you know, it doesn't really feed into a good area. And so, you know, as people, you know, travel, um, you know, I look at, you're going to have, and I'm just thinking my commute, depending on what it is, trying to go on forty-two, now we're going to have people having to go to the north and that's going to increase, you know, stuff going down lantern through the other neighborhoods and, you know, adds a lot more in there. Like I said, you're, you're kind of restricted a little bit with like a south entrance and an entrance there off the, um, the east side, just how the property is. I know we have the textures and stuff probably gets built up. That will, you know, probably alleviate itself somehow. But I mean, just looking conceptually right now, you know, you basically just have those that, that west exit and the north is really the only way in and out.
At what point do you anticipate having that traffic study completed to, to understand that?
I would say that's something we're going to start very quickly. You know, I think it was kind of based on the, the reception at this meeting to see if we were on the right, right path or not. We don't want to just spend the money on traffic study for no reason. But if, if it's something we need to pursue, then absolutely, that's something we'll get started on right away. And that will be part of kind of our submission process.
Yeah. I, I think it'll tell us a lot.
Let me, um, on, on the traffic study, just, um, whoever you might have do that traffic study, have them submit a memorandum of understanding so we can
Absolutely.
kind of figure out scope because O-Doc, O-Doc County Engineer and Doc will all be reviewing that.
I guess the other probably big questions we're talking, I won't say timeframe. I know we're very early, but, um, you know, I know we're having, you know, we have water stuff and sewer coming along. Project-wise, any idea of what you guys are looking at thinking? I know it's a really, really early question, but.
Well, if all goes well and sewer drops out of the sky, we'd like to start next year at C. But that's probably not going to happen. In general, I think we'd like to go through this process of zoning and annexation and get that through some time this year, be our projected timeline. And then just hurry up and wait for the sewer to be extended. If that's going to be the case coming up forty-two, it sounds like it's going to be coming right by our front door anyway. That just might be two or three years away. We just don't know. And that's kind of the understanding we've gotten and received, but things change, right?
Have you been in contact with the schools at all?
We have not been in contact with the schools yet. Certainly, by the time we submit a full zoning package, a lot of these things will be taken care of. Seeing that this was just kind of a preliminary review to make sure we're on the right track or not is kind of where we were.
Stat, we've been meeting with the school boards pretty regular here lately. They're just kind of giving their forecasting out, what, what we're seeing, what we're having coming in. So, just so they can start planning as well as, as everyone is planning. You know, we, we do have that buffer area a little bit that, you know, with the water and sewer waiting for that. So gives everyone a little breathing time just to get their plans and everything in the road. So, um, and I've been estimating high when I talk to the schools too, just, just so they, yeah.
Shortage of development is kind of.
Yeah. So with, uh, yeah, so like across the street from them to the west, Oak Grove, that's one that's been approved for a decade or so. And obviously it's not been developed up to this point. But, you know, you're two hundred and thirty-five or two hundred and fifty units, two hundred and thirty-five is what this says on ninety-eight acres. And I don't know that you know this answer, Randy, maybe you do. But, you know, talking about traffic studies and so forth, you know, you can talk about the traffic that they're going to generate from their neighborhood, uh, you know, seven hundred and twenty-two units. And that's going to generate at least seven hundred and twenty-two, uh, morning and afternoon trips, probably fifteen hundred. Not counting the, the commercial that's coming in around. But, um, how do, how do we make sure that the traffic study takes into consideration something that's already approved, but yet not yet developed?
We, we do that. We make sure that they put that in as background traffic. We assume that it's, that it's built and they plug that in for the background.
Yeah, because I mean, I, I think that we're, you know, I think that we're experiencing, you know, obviously we have some growth in the area and, um, you know, we've seen, you know, like from Madison Meadows out here to Perry Pike, there's, you know, no, no improvements that were recommended from the traffic study. But we all know that the traffic light here is going to be, you know, it's going to experience, it's going to be impacted, right? And we don't have, um, you know, without the developer paying for it, you know, that it, it comes down to the village having to find ways to, to do that. So I guess, you know, we want to make sure that, um, that, that this development is at least paying for itself in terms of infrastructure improvements and so forth. So, that was my question. Thank you.
As far as the curb cuts are concerned, what would you prefer to see?
Well, this was a study, this was O-Doc study for, um, you know, for, for that corridor. And it's, and it spanned from, from London to Delaware. And they did a study for the entire length of it. That was on them, not at our request. So I just know of the study and I, I know that one of the things that they've, um, you know, really pressed in that was to reduce the number of, of access points. And, you know, especially going along this way, I mean, Harrode included, I mean, you've got, you know, there's a number of curb cuts just in this area, curb cuts. There's no actual curb, but, you know, access points. And then, you know, obviously as you go north, you've got, you know, they, they have even closed one of their Dutchman entrances. It adds, you know, a way to help mitigate some of those. There's a long, I mean, a continuous curb cut along the bowling alley. So there's, there's not like tight access points that are designated in some places. And then there's too many in most places.
Right.
So in order to, you know, they talked about the speed limits and so forth. And I think, you know, in an effort to try to manage all that, I don't have a magic number, I'm not a traffic engineer. But I, I think that it just has to be, you know, considered. And I, I guess my concern is, is that they come back and say, well, you know, you've got to put a right turn lane in, you know, a deceleration lane to, you know, for right turns in, and then we're good. And then we're going to suffer, you know, five years after as everything else continues to develop. And I just want to make sure that, you know, we're doing, you know, what we can for, from an infrastructure standpoint. I think, uh, you know, we, we, you know, a lot of times you, you compare communities and you see what communities do things well and what communities don't do things well. And it almost always comes back to infrastructure. How are you managing the, the, the traffic? How are, how stormwater being managed? How's, um, you know, the water and sewer being impacted and what, how does that turn to impact our residents? How's, um, you know, the water and sewer being impacted and what, how does that turn to impact our residents, you know, down, down the road and so all those things. But I, when you look at the good communities, they're taking all that into consideration and they're trying to develop those things ahead of time versus being reactive. And, and just like if you, you know, look at the early station going, you know, towards Dublin from here. Um, you know, one of the things that we had, you know, pressed at that time was the roundabout out there. Is it needed today? No, but is it gonna be needed in five years? The answer is yes. So, and you know, just lessons learned for us and I want to make sure that we're doing all those things with this development and the one across the street and the next one to the south whenever that happens and whatnot, so.
With your, um, with your main entrance, uh, do you anticipate with the commercial up front, are you thinking you wanna signal?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I think that, with the speed limits out, up front, I mean, maybe they'll change and lower that speed limit sometime in the future. But if it's, if people are going fifty miles an hour up and down that street, we're gonna have to widen it, make turn lanes and certainly provide safe access in and out. I think the other ones would probably be only a right in, right out. I think maybe they're listed as full, but there might be some limitation. Or I assume that we're gonna have to get these things approved from ODOT anyway, since it's a state highway, so. Throughout this process, but probably before we come back in, we will already have had a meeting with ODOT to have some of that, that stuff figured out.
And we've started those conversations with ODOT too and Madison County Engineers Department too. So we've been working, forecasting these coming, you know, that we have coming, especially along the corridors. What's gonna be, what's expected and what's gonna be needed, so.
Derek, this, and I don't know that you have the answer to this, um, but the Oak Grove subdivision are, I, I know that there's an entrance that's already, um, that would come off of forty-two. Does it line up with the Boulevard entrance that they have?
That was my question, actually. So, no, you know, you're good.
It's really close. It's really close.
Let's make it really perfect.
That was gonna be a comment of mine through the, through the TIS and MOU process is to make sure we line that up, you don't pass the catwalk or.
If you, if you share that plan with us, I'm sure we can massage that stuff. If it's close, I mean, if it's several hundred feet off, that's different, but I, I agree, it should be one.
I feel like it's pretty close. I mean, just on the, um, on our, our site work, the, one of the concepts, it looks like it's pretty close and that's what I'm saying, I think you'll be able to massage it out.
If it's close, we'll, we'll get there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll get there.
Yeah, um, yeah, cuz I, I don't know. I mean, you know, that's already an approved development. So, I mean, it kind of, even though it's not being developed, I mean, how, how does that work? I mean, that was already approved, so it entered first to the table.
Do they have plats approved, like all those roadways or?
Yeah, we went there all the way through this, this system.
Plats are not approved.
Well, no, they haven't done engineering development plans. Engineering's not, it's not.
Is that, is that just a single family residential development?
Well, that's what they're talking about for whatever they have.
It started in two thousand eight.
We tried to purchase more than this entry.
Really?
But anyways, uh, you know, I, 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 it's absolutely important that, you know, whatever curb cuts that we're adding, I mean, you certainly don't want staggered intersections anywhere. So, um, whatever it's gonna take, you, you may have to, you know, flip your A two and your A three so you can move that entrance further to the south or whatever. But something along those lines. And again, I know this.
That's great, but let's get to that.
Brian, we have a representative of fire. Do you, from your fire entrance and access to everything from this plan, do you, do you have any comments or anything?
I don't, from looking at it, I don't think so. Um, I have to go back, there's some requirements for access based on a number of houses that are required, more than, more than one. So thinking of getting past the commercial back into the residential, but I don't think they're at the level of requirement to access to that section.
Yeah.
Those two hundred, whatever the number was with the residential set.
Yeah, and you're right. I mean, if there, you know, happened to be something that was going on, uh, in between C one and B one, um, you know, what, whatever type of event, you know, maybe it's, maybe it is a fire that is there in the Boulevard, right, that, um, would block that exit or even the entrance, however you wanna look at it. But, you know, you would have, you know, about pretty much that entire neighborhood that would be, blocked from exiting unless they're all going up through Hawthorne to, uh, to get there. So, yeah, I mean, I think Brian, you, you have a good point, at, at least in terms of the ingress and egress.
I'd say just looking, you know, as you come in on that Main Boulevard and you make the right turn to go south, that is, you know, the, the only, and, and I don't know how you can do anything, but I mean, it's like you have, you're gonna have your, you know, bulk of the houses right there. I don't know what the number would be, just adding real quick.
Well, I mean, there's literally.
Two hundred, two hundred and twenty-five or so houses basically, you know, blocked by that one, one road. Now, that, that goes back to where we said earlier, you know, if stuff happens on the, the connected properties, that sort of will fix itself, but.
I agree. In the short term, you're gonna be a little bit somewhat limited as far as the.
Yeah, future development, we see the connections into the other neighborhoods and so forth.
Yeah, once you get down to the south, obviously that'll alleviate a lot of that concern, but.
One of the, one of the things you can notice on the, on the way those roads come into single family areas is that they are single loaded. So if there's a park on one side, that's, that's an enormous advantage in terms of, of, uh, how that sub, how that subdivision's gonna look or how that community is gonna look when you're driving in and you're seeing nothing but open space. And, and there aren't, there aren't houses backing up to the, to the park, but rather a great visual.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I a hundred percent agree with you. I think, I think kind of what we were talking about is this is just a literal bottleneck. I mean, from this, you know, from all these homes here, you literally come into this bottleneck here. And that, that was just, I, I think kind of what we were talking about. If something's happening, basically at this arrow right here on the, on, you know, what will be the east side of C one and C or B one and C one. You know, like where this arrow is at, if something was happening right there at the litter block, these people are stuffed unless they come out through Hawthorne right here.
Typically, actually, the Boulevard improves that situation. Typically, if that's a single lane.
Cause you have a, a one lane on one side, one lane on the other.
Typically, a lot of times, that's how we deal with a lot of fire issues is we have, we count those two ways in and two ways out of fire.
Have you seen where they park their trucks?
You should see a background.
Just overall stuff was running, just, like I said, kind of the big drawback just is, is the density in, in that. And I, yes, density's good in going with that, but looking at, at least I was pulling up, just like I said, real quickly and I could be going down the wrong rabbit hole. But like on our, um, the PRD area, which I think this would, where it would fit in right now in our current zoning, for, for the max density for mixed residents was five units per acre, as I kind of did some quick calculation. We're about six point six with it, so we're just on the higher side of the density. And I mean, like I said, the concept I like, I just would like the, the number of, of residences or however that can be done, just, it's a lot of people in a small area comparing to all the other developments that we have existing comparing to the Darby, um, station or Darby Fields. You know, this is definitely on the higher side per, per acre and, um, like I said, not necessarily a bad thing, but, you know, the, what we hear, um, what we've heard from our council is, you know, we have a lot of these tight packed houses and, um, I don't know where we're at with that right now with all the other developments coming in. But I know that's just really been the concern that we hear from everyone in the community. Like I said, I think we know we need the commercial and the multifamily, the townhouses, you know, I, I, I do like the flow and, and we do need a lot of those. And, you know, I, I think we need to be, um, scrutinized, scrutinized, but, you know, this is the first of these developments in Plain City and, you know, as you said, making it like a bridge park or kind of, I wanna say the, the cornerstone. But, you know, we wanna make sure we get this right and this will be the initial draw kind of on that, that forty-two corridor. So we gotta make sure we have, have it blend in, you know, with the whole city and, and work well.
You know, when you're talking about density, I mean, you, you, you look at, I think you calculated three hundred and twenty-five single family units through D one, D two, D three on basically a total of seventy acres. And just across the street, you've got two hundred and thirty-five units on ninety-eight acres. So a hundred plus houses, twenty more acres, um, twenty, almost thirty more acres. So I mean, I think that's what you're talking about density wise. I mean, it's just, it's at least a concern. We understand, I mean, you, you, you hit on everything already. We know that you have to have rooftops in order to support the commercial. You don't get commercial, which are conveniences for us residents, right? Uh, you know, to be able to meet and connectivity, you know, we, we wanna be able to navigate through these paths and be able to get that commercial too. There's, uh, there's formula to it. You gotta have enough rooftops to, to support it and, um, so I understand that there's a density issue. But understand, I guess from our perspective, there's a density issue.
We have these discussions everywhere we go. It's definitely the, the topic to be discussed and, and I've been president of the Ohio Home Owners Association. We deal with this all over the state. And, and I think it raises a lot of good questions. I mean, and I think what I said earlier, there's the right place for the right density. You know, as you get closer to the Darby, there's more ravines and topography or there's different things going on. Yeah. That should be one unit per acre. There should be more open space. There should be things considered in that. I think there's an opportunity here of being on a state highway, being closer to the town center, but maybe that's a, a good place. But I would, I think we could all agree that Plain City's gonna see a lot of growth in the next five to ten years. Where and how do we wanna see that grow? Where, I should rephrase that. Where and how do you wanna see that happen?
I, I like hearing you say we, to be honest with you. I mean, I mean, if you're gonna build, be a part of the community, right? I mean.
We feel like we are, just don't wanna assume.
No, I mean, and, and I know it's hard to, and, and you kind of hit on it. It was one of my points was like the, the bike path, you know, connecting. You know, it's like, hey, you know, it's not drawn here, but hey, forty-two would be nice, you know, that way somebody can go, you know, north to south. You know, go up to the Dutchman, but come back down, um, you know, walking the bike trail from the elementary school. And I know you gotta work with Darby Fields to connect, um, but even, and, and this just was kind of, you know, you have the, you know, the bike trail here and you have, you know, some retail shops and it's like just even, you know, integrating it, you know, whether it's like on the backside with just something to, to get the one forty-two side there, you know, to come through, not necessarily the zigzag, cuz you get a lot of, you know, the bike trails coming from Hilliard, a lot of people in. And, you know, if we have that nice path system that, you know, they're not having to go up, on Converse or, you know, through that, we have a nice pass to, to bring them up, um, you know, I think that would, would look really good.
Yeah, I don't, I don't wanna oversell this by saying we're building a bridge park here in Plain City, right? But if you flip through some of those pictures, if you can, and see, you know, we're trying to create a destination point, a place where people are gonna come and have sidewalk cafes. And, you know, you're, I think you're prone to seeing more density around this type of development. I think creating all that connectivity and really making that a destination, it's gonna help everything, yeah.
Now, on the, the, the commercial side up there, kind of those buildings that you were just looking at, and I know they're just kind of generic. Are you thinking, you know, one story and I'm just like up at like perimeter, like where Matt and Miller, it's like, kind of like that style? Or are you thinking down at Bridge Park or somewhere, it's, you know, kind of the restaurant down there and some residential, uh?
I'm thinking a story, a story and a half. I didn't really talk about this much as far as a style and architecture. What we talked about is creating some of a rural, somewhat of a rural farmhouse type architectural appeal. You know, my envision would be that there were barns that were on the property that we had and turned into a retail center and it, it fits with the community. I don't think making those really tall is gonna be an answer. I think the modeling shows them maybe two-story, but I think maybe they're a story, story and a half, just kind of depends. And we'd be open to any suggestions as far as that goes as we get closer to the.
Yeah, I think.
That process. I think this just shows more of the massing and the scale of what we're trying to do by creating really a neighborhood retail field that, you, you know, how great would it be to ride your bike all the way around and stop for a cup of coffee and keep, continue on? You know, that, that's really gonna be a nice destination.
Right, right.
And we can get some of the conveniences that Plain City desperately needs.
Right.
And really to speak to what he said, you know, the, the bike path for, along, along forty-two, um, you know, that, that. I don't, honestly, I don't know whether it's part of the Alcott property or not, the operation restoration or whatever. I don't know if there's a bike path that is planned for the, the road fund or not. But I, I think, you know, to what Mr. Harriman said is, you know, that, that is that natural progression to the Dirt Dutchman or the, you know, the other commercial that's, you know, on the whole side of your project. So, you know, having that connectivity from a walkability or bikeability standpoint, you know, I, I think would be beneficial. And generally speaking, uh, you know, all of our developments have had, you know, that, of course, you know, they're all, you know, mostly residential. But they do have that, that bike path along the roadways.
I guess that I'm not gonna justify density all the way. I'm sure that we have our thoughts on this, but if you look at something like this and what you're trying to attract, density is gonna have to be a by, byproduct at some level. So it's really what kind of developments we're gonna see. Maybe there's a way to tailor that, that we can all meet in the middle and it, and it works. And that's where we're gonna hopefully come to.
And, and, uh, you know, and I'm gonna go, I just, as we put the puzzle pieces together, it's just our existing neighborhoods that we're connecting to, you know, just having a nice blend, you know. You, you, you know, kind of, you talk about that Boulevard having that nice transition is kind of having that coming in from the northern route too. Of just, you know, transitioning, you know, so as you kind of flow through, you know, whichever direction, you know, you really come from, north, south, as you said, is, you know, bringing the whole community together, having that flow coming in, you know, from the north to the south, having that flow come in instead of all of a sudden you, you know, you make that right turn and all of a sudden we're neighborhood and you make that, that right turn, damn, you're right in a, uh, you know, townhouse, uh, parking lot trying to get up to the.
I think that's kind of, kind of our intention, one of our goals in this plan is to take the surrounding existing development, what about the future? And really funnel that to the park and then through that commercial development so that, that the sense of community and sense of place really extends beyond our site. It really starts to incorporate those other neighborhoods. Um, so, so that, that really is one of the principal goals of our, of, of the concept. Continue to incorporate that.
Yeah.
And I'd still like to see on that, on the north corner of the houses, have it be like a nice, you know, farm market with flowers and vegetables that we're used to always pulling in, getting there all the time.
I, I think we'll be open to a lot of suggestions. Obviously, the, the commercial and retail is, is gonna be a work in progress as things develop. I think if we're truly two to three years out with sewer, lots of change around here and hopefully those opportunities will become greater. But, um, we're extremely excited about the opportunity and we, we hope you are as well.
I really see this as a, at least the commercial component, you know, we have our historic uptown. I mean, this essentially could be our downtown, you know, our new downtown area, that you don't have two different, uh, two different, totally different, uh, fields that, uh, both sides, but.
This is the first thing I've seen like this in a long time, so.
Just, just going with some of the, and just go on the fire side for the apartment side, what's our limit on that? Is the three stories at the highest we can get?
Thirty-five feet or something, I think. I think it's like thirty-five feet or something, isn't it?
So that was, if I recall correctly, the, the level that was approved for apartments behind the park or whatever, three-story apartment. So just typical, but I think, I think the way it was measured is thirty-five feet to the east, which is a lot, which is rough itself, so.
Certainly, we wouldn't be proposing, proposing anything more than that.
Okay, yeah, no, just as, as stuff gets done.
Once you get taller, you start to get into a lot different building code and that's why you see all these three-story stories.
What, um, and, and just this more education side on the stuff for, like the, so we kind of had the housing price point. I have no clue, like town housing, apartments, what's. I have no clue, like, town housing, apartments, what's the, I guess, any idea of what the price points on those would be?
At all, not really.
Okay.
It it becomes a factor of how many units you end up with and the, it's really the totality of what we're looking at. I I think our, the overall sense and overall goal is to make sure we accommodate housing across as many, as big of a platform as we can. Right, we wanna make something as as affordable as we can, but give some opportunity that if somebody wants something more, they can have it all in one community.
Okay.
Charles, can you talk a little bit about, you're the developer, are you also the builder for all these components?
Yeah, so obviously, we're not gonna build everything in here, we're not gonna build all four different products, we'd probably be looking at the townhouse product, potentially the, uh. The empty nester product could could be something. Actually, we could look at a lot of it a different way, my brother happens to build apartments, if he'd be interested in looking at the site, we we could be involved in something with him together. We certainly would be selling off portions of it, I mean, this is a very large project, we couldn't build, our company couldn't build this whole project out in a reasonable timeframe, so we would certainly be selling portions of it. That's yet to be determined, but.
But you won't be building the single-family houses?
It's undetermined, but probably not.
Okay.
And the the product you saw, like in Ruby Era, those are sixty-five-foot wide houses. That's probably in their side loaded, so you need a a larger footprint, that probably would be what would be here, we're looking at probably fifty-five to sixty-five-foot lots with side yards, so you're probably looking at a little bit of a smaller product. We're not, we haven't gone through this fully to determine all the different lot sizes, I'm sure we'll vary some lot sizes, they're not all gonna be fifty-foot lots, and get as many as we can, we wanna be cognizant of. So the different sizes and allowing different products and different price points as far as that goes. Uh, so I can't commit and say, no, I'm not gonna build any houses.
You just hit a.
Careful.
Yeah.
Careful.
What I said.
I was just gonna say, you you kinda just hit a a bit of a source file, when you're talking fifty-foot wide lots, you're gonna probably need to.
No, I said, we're not gonna do all fifty-foot lots, yeah.
But you said fifty, fifty-five, sixty-five, and I think, um, mo- most of the people in front of you are are gonna gravitate toward the sixty-five-foot side.
Which which size, sixty-five?
As opposed to the fifty-five or fifty-foot, yeah. Just for whatever it's worth as you go forward.
To keep Derek involved in those conversations, he can, he's a pretty good.
There's been extensive conversations from this group about, uh, the the size of lots, uh, that, you know, that we're comfortable with and. We've, you know, said many times, uh, in 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 these meetings, that we're looking for more and better, you've got a lot of more and better, you know, but. It it it'll, it'll be a conversation that will continue, I'm sure.
Yeah, I I would say, in in a lot of things, how we think about properties and maybe even ourselves, is that we consider ourselves a rural community. And we try to use that lens a lot, I mean, me personally, I'll just speak personally here, I I use that lens a lot when I see developments and zoning code rewrites. And so maybe to share that with you is just, uh, when you're thinking about densities and stuff, that, in reality, we 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 aren't trying to lose who we feel that we are with density, so.
And and a lot of the builders that, they look at their, um, websites and their advertisements, you know, I think everybody, they sell Plain City as this small, you know. Country that's close to the city and, you know, it's. I think that's getting less, the city's getting closer and closer, and I know that's, you know, the the selling point that a lot of people. It's these developments are being built, not necessarily this one, but other ones, you know, that's what you see from the realtors, from the the builders, saying, hey, nice piece of, be out in the country, but be close to the city and.
Yeah, I think we wanted to do something a little different, a little bit out of the box, so I wanna be cognizant of the density issues and the size of lots. I think there hopefully is a happy medium or a trade-off that we can acknowledge if we want something like this. I I feel this is a much stronger avenue than just saying, let's just do a bunch of sixty-five-foot lots and fill the property and put as much open space as we need and just have another cookie cutter subdivision. Being close to the town center, as I mentioned, and having that opportunity to do something different potentially and being along State Route forty-two. Maybe that's something that we we should be considering, hopefully.
I mean, I think it does mean, you know, we've been saying, give us, you know, some different variety, so there's definitely different variety.
I think the other thing you have to think about here is that it is not gonna happen overnight, we're talking maybe ten years, depending on when that sewer comes. So there's a lot of change that will occur between now and then, and if we get the basics down and we know kind of density and and and, uh. Product that you're looking for, we can make it happen because we've got the time.
Well, I I mean, I I guess I'll speak more for myself on this one, but, you know, I feel like in the past, you know, people, the. Our early developments have been just, they've come out and just had houses pop up and, you know, I think, um. Why I got into the commission is trying to sit there and go, hey, let's, let's try to be smart and get the right projects in here. And let's develop Plain City, you know, in a smart direction and try to think, you know, big picture and get, you know, the needs of the community met and. Not worry about always just throwing in, you know, houses on every, every field that everybody's, you know, comes in, so, you know, we wanna have a, you know. Not necessarily you, but everybody else who's coming is, we wanna have a nice standard, we wanna make it, um, you know, a a good community, you know, that we're, we're gonna be proud of and.
The, uh, the real important part of this project for Plain City is the development of commercial. Get employment, and it and it generates some other kinds of business, but more importantly, there's a payroll tax that goes directly to the general client. It's, it's important for you to get growth in in commercial, just to generate employment. That's why this project is is better than most, it's better than what we would normally do, is just line forty-two with commercial and puts what else is behind it. And that's kind of what we're looking at just to the north of us, that's not what we wanted to do, we wanted to create something more significant and more of a neighborhood. With with good opportunity for Plain City to 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 grow and develop correctly, much like Dublin.
Term I use a lot of smart growth, using the resources you have wisely to maximize. You know, would you rather see this sprawl out, I mean, if you're now ten thousand residents at some point, how big of an envelope do you want to take to do that? I think, in my mind, a higher density project is conserving more of the Darby because you're staying further away and you're keeping it more compact where it should be. Now, there's a rural aspect to, this is a rural community, you don't wanna lose that. How do we balance all that, and I I think we've gotten a lot of positive feedback from you on that, and I think architecturally, you know. Using that farmhouse motif and some of that rural characteristic and keeping that a thing throughout certainly helps.
I mean, you titled it Farms, so.
Yes.
Right?
BT Farms, we wanna preserve the name and the legacy of the BT family and and again, do something we're all proud of.
And again, continue with the mountain, 'cause I see a, um, a century farm to the south and across the road, and I just. I know that family is very dedicated in keeping that in in farmlands, and so as as we do grow and, but I do wanna be, um. Make sure that we are being good neighbors to them.
I guess that's probably the other traffic thing going on stuff, not necessarily with this one, but it's though, you know, it's still to make stuff, you know, tractor-friendly, um, for the equipment, you know. As we, you know, forty-two, if it develops and goes into one of the, you know, boulevards or however they have it drawn up, you know, make sure that, you know, we can have stuff so the combines can. Go go back and forth.
I can't thank you enough for all your time, if there's any other comments, love to hear them, but if, I think we've got a a great list to start with, to go refine the plan a little bit and maybe come back with our application and and see where things go. I think I'm hearing that we kinda like the idea, we just need to tweak a few things, is that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Fair to say?
Fair to say.
So we'd like to get busy with the application, take all these comments in mind, and certainly I'll work with Derek and bounce some things off him periodically. Hopefully, we'll continue on the right track and be back in a few months with something to to talk about.
Great, thanks.
Thank you all very much, appreciate your time.
If the, if the door don't mind and if the family don't mind, can I ask, uh, what you all think about the plans?
Relaxing, relaxing.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much, appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, well, I guess we are still going.
Thank you, thank you guys.
You're there, well, thank you. All right, uh, so continuing off our third discussion items, uh, Mr. Hudsonson's zoning code update.
Yep, so I talked to, um, Kim Littleton of O H M, who does the code writing, and trying to get some guidance from him, kind of where we need to focus on. A- as they're developing some, um. Some text verbiage and some samples for us, uh, he thought it'd be good for us to go over our use tables, um, and kinda look at those again. So I thought tonight it, I think it'd be more productive if we focus on one thing at a time, uh, and we look at this comprehensive use table. Uh, in my earlier notes that I had, my, for my initial review, a lot I'm concerned was the, uh, districts that permitted, um. Multiple uses in districts that, uh, we should probably look at a little bit closer, um, more, more specific, like the restaurant and the bar. Limiting the restrictions of the districts where those are permitted, uh, but if, however, Tyler, however you wanna do this, if you guys, if we just wanna go line by line what we got here and and just. Talk it out, just, you know, so we could at least knock out the use side of it. Now, the districts, you know, that, they could potentially change as we just, uh, as we move on to discussions with the districts, but let's use what we have there now, just as a, you know, as a starting point. The, also, the, uh, accessory uses of the drive-through was another one that that I wanted to bring up and and look at as well.
Okay.
So if you wanna, if you want me to lead or if you wanna lead or?
Why don't you, you take the lead, so we'll be on, uh, what, age fifty-nine, start with the adult use?
So this one, um, the, the, you know, the corridor, I think, makes sense. The innovation employment district, I I don't know if that fits in to that, I don't know if we if we use that as a conditional use or if we just not permit it there. So we're, you know, we're talking about industrial employment, we're talking about potential, let's say, technology warehousing, that type of deal. Means we wanna see a conditional use potentially going into that type of district.
I mean, I guess we have to list one, I mean, I would, my my personal one for adult use would be not approved anywhere, but I think, I think we have to have it.
Adult use is what we're thinking of.
Well, that's what I'm saying, cor- the the corridor, it makes, I mean, it would make sense if that would go in, you know, in some type of corridor district. Just specifically that, I E., I would, just envisioning what that district could look like, that's probably, I I just don't see that fit there, so I don't know.
I mean, I think this will, at least for me, would be just.
Good to strike.
Just strike it off of I E., just have it on the ones, we at least have to have this conditional somewhere, so.
Is that, is that legal enough to just have it in the one?
She said it was okay.
She said it's okay. A nod is fine, all right, okay, good.
Uh, so we got, uh. Accessory uses, so customarily associated, assoc- accessory uses, um, I mean, that's a given, it that, that is such a variety, you know, wide variety permitted in each of these. An accessory use is is going to fall right in place, so I I'm, I'm fine with that one, I don't know if anybody else has any, anything on that one.
Could you describe what that means, customarily associated accessory?
So that would be like your your sheds or accessory structures, something like that, an accessory to the principal structure. So, and and, you know, there's an accessory to any one of these districts, no matter what they're called or what's permitted, um, to permit some type of accessory to that principal structure. So I I think we're right on as far as permitted, and, you know, of course, the the setbacks and everything in that district would regulate.
Right.
Yeah, and I would say, I think probably if it's like sheds, even you get into this housing, they prob- most are gonna all have homeowners, which would probably, you know, limit it, so. I would say that's probably much tougher.
Uh, so the next one, drive-through, so this one, I I think we. Need to look at, um, I E., again, the industrial one, the or innovative employment, I I don't, I don't see a drive-through use in there. I would, and that would tie into the restaurant or bar, um, that typically, I guess, you would have a drive-through with. I just don't see that type, when I look at innovative or technology-related districts, I I don't see bars, restaurants, or those type of uses in those districts. We're gonna, we would want to keep those in other districts, commercial districts that are more related, so I I don't know if we wanna start a conversation on that one.
Well, so like, you're looking, I I, you know, as an example, if you like, think about the Amazon properties out at Hootchard Road, Dublin. That's what you're talking about, the innovation employment type building, so what if you looked at the corner of Hootchard Road and one sixty-one? Would it, I mean, could there be a coffee shop there that would want a, um, a a drive-through? I mean, it, that that would be that same zoning, I mean, that whole area would be, I mean, I guess I could, you know, potentially see.
Or or would that lot then get?
We don't, we don't zone by lot, I mean, it's, I I mean, the frontage, right, I mean, you you, you're talking blocks, not parcels.
So I I think.
Zoning, right, I mean, it's more.
When it comes to the, the innovation employment district, these are gonna be, these likely are not gonna be just our size of community and and realistically what we're gonna get. You know, we're not gonna get big, major, uh, uh, industries and stuff like that, uh, so realistically, looking at innovative, um, those type of. Research, development, that's kinda stuff, are gonna be a smaller scale, um, and when I look at those, those districts. Some of these are gonna be created by our economic development, I mean, there's, we're gonna get to the point where the village is gonna have to start investing in, you know, in acquiring land to set up these type of things. Uh, and that's not uncommon with other development, other municipalities do, um, so as we're growing and as lands and and opportunities come open. For us to really hone in and focus on a specific spot where we envision this is going to go, um, I think. Limiting, limiting those to those type of uses only will get those drawl out of that, we want them to leave that development and come into other developments and to get food and and drinks or or whatever they have. That's, that's just my two cents on it.
So then you're asking us to strike the C, the conditional use of drive-through out of the I E., then, is that what you're?
Uh, well, yeah, it, but my other, well, my other one was just in the. So the the uptown corridor, see, it's. I don't, it, I just wanted to make it a discussion point, I mean, definitely, I don't, conditional use would be the most, but. We just wanna be careful when we put those conditional uses, that that does open that door, it does, it does go through the approval process and everything, but it opens that door to allow those uses in there.
But if the door's closed, then there's no mechanism for it, for it all.
Yeah, but in.
Short of a rezoning, there's no, there's no mechanism.
But in it, I I think, at least for what I think the village is envisioning. But in, I think, at least for what I think the village is envisioning, as far as an innovative or a light manufacturing district, I just, I, I don't see it fitting in there, that's just, that's just me.
I would be okay with taking it out of the innovation district.
I think, I mean, going off of that, that, I mean, makes sense, I think probably in the uptown, you know, still leaving the conditional because, you know, we do have down at the old bank building, you know, set up for.
Yeah, so.
Drive-through and.
Well, he wants a drive-through, but that's no longer, it's not, I missed that one, but, yeah, so it's a conditional use now.
Yeah.
I mean, he will have to have a variance in order to even, to, to re-establish a drive-through there, so. But if he rezoned it without, then he wouldn't even have that, so I, I think at least if the conditional use would be appropriate.
I think so.
And you know, I, I personally, I don't, I obviously haven't, you know, looked at this hard, but, you know, for me, you know, you, you just mentioned, you know, like, you know, like how we're going to grow, we're not going to have this, or we're not going to have that, and I don't know what we're gonna have to, you know, tomorrow, next week, next month, you know, a decade from now on, and you don't want to be in the habit of rewriting your zoning code to accommodate, you know, a, a, a certain development that comes in, but you can't leave it wide open where anything can be done. And I, for me, that is the hard balance, you know, where you can just say, strike this, strike this, strike that, because, you know, either, you know, you gotta have to, you know, do rezoning and then you're on the risk of, you know, rezoning homeless parcels instead of blocks, and that, and that's not good, I mean, we have that already, and we're trying to, to limit that, so.
I mean.
I, I understand what you're saying, is if it's conditional, then, you know, then people think that the door is open, and then that puts the pressure on BZA or whomever to say yay or nay.
Where, where does that go? Does it go to BZA or does it come to us?
Yeah, it goes BZA.
BZA.
Yeah, but. Those members of BZA.
It's like, you can't do this, you know, what we're asking to, but if it's conditional, it's kind of like.
Yeah, yeah, so, I mean, you know, there's, so if it goes to BZA for the, you know, for a, for a conditional use, you know, there's criteria that has to meet. But I just, I think big picture, looking at an innovation park or whatever, this is, that's kind of the big vision, I just, do we want restaurants or fast food in, in, in that type of park, you know?
No, cause you would, then, like you said, to come to our, our corridor sections, our uptown.
I mean, yes and no, right, I mean, cause again, we just got done talking about, you know, the, the, the traffic issues, and you know, you, you pull people out of, I, I mean, you know, I think of like, I mean, what, what's a good example of this, like the, the, the park in West Jeff, like the, the employment areas there, like where the Target and all those things are now, like the warehousing?
Yeah, possibly there, yeah, Marysville Industrial, you know, out there where there are industrial parks and stuff are out there.
I mean, I, I just, I, I don't disagree, I mean, we want to get people into areas that are conducive for that, but you know, you do add the traffic, right? I mean, if, you know, if you've already got daytime traffic and then you add all the extra traffic coming in potentially from an industrial employment area, I mean, I'm not saying it's wrong, but it's at least something that.
And I look, I think, just envisioning big picture, you know, and we're, and we're getting ready to do a lot of land use studies and, and definitely doing some thoroughfare studies that, you know, that we, really true thoroughfare planning. You know, industrial, I don't see a lot of industrial necessarily right off against the highway, so it could have that commercial frontage with those uses up front with the industrial innovative behind it, and that's where I wouldn't want to see a restaurant or a drive-through back in the, you know, behind, when you have to drive through it, so I don't think they're necessarily gonna be on the opposite sides of town, but I think as we, as we vision what those corridors are gonna look like, adding that retail commercial up on 42, with any type of industrial potentially back behind, just like residential, residential will have that stuff where you're driving down a corridor and you're seeing commercial, and then with the bigger stuff maybe behind. So, but yeah, if we're looking at a single parcel, where, you know, where they would have to leave that parcel maybe, but I, I think just looking how I think we would want to structure and how we'd want that stuff to look like on those corridors, I think putting those innovations in the back, research stuff in the back, but so they, so they technically would just, might not even have to go on to 42 to reach some of those.
And looking at it like that, it, you know, sort of makes sense, what you're saying.
But, you know, those things, and so, you know, we kind of went, as far as the drive-through, so I think conditional use in uptown, I think is, is good. Permitted use obviously in corridor, I don't know, you know, it's, we could sit on that innovation and see if you, if you want to, or, or.
I, I mean, so, to me, the innovation's just so broad, I guess that's the hardest part is, cause you know, you know, we're pict, you know, we're picturing, you know, this, like, you know, the big warehouses.
So, and so when we.
It's like, yeah, that makes sense, you know, you're not gonna, you know, you're not gonna go behind this big warehouse to go pick a drive-through throughout, but it's hard to try to picture how that will be, I mean, we're like, is it, is like an office park, like innovation?
It could potentially, so I think with, with the economic development group together, and definitely working with Jason, our economic development director, just as we're starting to forecast and really map out, you know, our use plan and, and updating that comp plan future growth, I think we're going to see more where those areas are potentially going to be. You know, we, I think even just a few months ago when I started here, you know, it, it looked like it could potentially be out on 161, it's slowly shifting, just because of what's going out there, that it could potentially end up on South 42, I, I don't know. So I, I think, I, I think there's, there's definitely opportunity in, in that district too, when we start, when we get to the, our discussions on the district names and, and district requirements, I think that innovation employment could change a little bit, and I, I really want to lean hard on our economic development committee and, and kind of see what their thoughts and stuff are too, to give us some advice maybe on what they're, what they're planning and what they see. So maybe that turns into, and not necessarily innovative employment, maybe a, a, a technology, light manufacturing or something, you know, we, we're not gonna be, but I say that we're not gonna be, we don't know, but just of our logistics of where we're located, I don't foresee us being as far off as, as the other states as well as seeing big, big industrial, I just, it, it could happen someday, but I, I think, I think the focus is gonna be on more smaller scale industrial or warehousing like that. But things are coming out there, you know, we're, we're getting these groups, I know.
I mean, I, like you said, I, I mean, I'm good scratching off those employment districts, cause I think just anything that would build up even like office parks or anything, I think, like you said, you're gonna have more or less a commercial corridor up on the 161, 42 side would be your main thoroughfares where any kind of that place would go, probably that would have the, a drive-through component.
What are the definitions of these? See his corridor, you said innovation employment, what, what are the rest of these?
Uh, there was uptown, uptown neighborhood, suburban re, is that suburban, uh? Residential, rural residential A1, and the VR was the village residential.
And OS.
Open, open space. So the home occupation one, I mean, it pretty much, it's, it's a given, I mean, if it's residential use, we're gonna permit, permit home occupation. Now, I could tell you, a lot of zoning codes across, especially in Ohio, home occupation is always a conditional use, no matter what district it's in. So I, I don't know if that's something we want to look at, it would, what it would do is, instead of making it a permitted use, it'd make it a requirement for them to come in front of the board to basically state their plan to make that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think that's a bad thing, you know, spur residential, you know, sitting there, you know, the place next to you all of a sudden becomes a, you know, some kind of home business, you have all this traffic coming in, I, I.
And, and also.
At least have somebody go through and go, yeah, probably that type of business, we don't want to have that happening right next door.
And in that code section defining home occupation too, where we get specific as far as permitted, you know, what permitted, what a home occupation could be and, and all that, but as far as a permitted use, I mean, really, they, it's permitted, there's, we don't have any control.
Can I ask a quick question that comes with my, my, my previous question? If it's a conditional use, it comes here, then it doesn't go to BZA?
It goes BZA.
Oh, you said it, okay. Why, if we have a permitted use in a corridor, is that saying that somebody could have a house on the corridor district and live there, is that?
Uh, so yeah, so that one's weird, well, I, I, the only thing I think of is potentially if changing the zoning to corridor and it encompasses existing houses, that maybe that might be there now, maybe that's why that was like.
But couldn't it be just what we just talked about with, with the Virginia homes, if there was apartments over top of retail on the lower side, I mean, that would be home occupation, right?
No, no, cause it'd be, it's kind of separate, cause it'd be the commercial business would be the lower and above would just be a residential.
Home occupation, yeah, so, you work where you live.
That house would be.
So it'd be like a daycare, a kid care, or law offices or a lot, we, we've had several of those.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I would be comfortable just going to conditional, just to have.
Are you talking drive-through?
No, the home occupation. Yeah, especially like, like suburban residential and that, you know, just to have more or less some checks and balances.
Yeah, and it, it goes in line with, so even though it's a home occupation, people are still, they're still gonna be required to do the zoning permit, this is an easy way to make sure we capture those permitted uses and get regulations out to them, cause if it's permitted, it's, there's not much saying that they just can start that business and we don't know or.
Cause if, if it was permitted, you know, maybe, really it would be they just come in and just file the whatever paperwork and just gets a quick, I shouldn't say quick, but then just you would go out or it's always, but you know, goes out and just gives the approval and away it goes.
Whereas if it's conditional, there's more hoops to jump through.
Yeah, at least gets.
We don't want to discourage it, you know, that's why I think we have it in every district that we have it listed there, we don't want to discourage, I mean, there's, there's lots of opportunities, especially since COVID, that there's a lot of home occupations. But, you know, like we talked about in our last meeting, Airbnb's and stuff, there's, it just takes those few bad eggs that kind of ruin it for everyone. So I, I, I mean, I would.
Yeah, that's, I, I, I agree, I, I mean, I honestly, I don't like the idea of, you know, making a lot of things conditional use, cause now you're overloading BZA who's already overloaded with whatever, and if you're talking about adding this just as an extra, and I know you didn't mean it like this Tyler, but just as an extra hoop to jump through, that's just kicking the can down the road for somebody else to have to deal with. I mean, I, I think happened in that, you know, a, a definition that said, yes, home occupation is permitted, but these are the defined terms or whatever, I mean, that's the only thing that makes sense to me, I, I don't want to just create hoops. But if, if somebody has a specific, you know, thing that they want to do, you say, yep, that fits right there, you can do that. If it doesn't fit, then it just doesn't fit.
Yeah.
But what fits?
What's that?
What fits?
Well, I, I, that's, it, it, it's almost nine o'clock, we're, we're, we're not.
My question does not fit, no, I just, I just wanted to thought it was interesting, you know, cause there's criteria to define it.
And we still have, and we do have those definitions in there, I mean, so it, it, this is just the use table, so we, we, we have that defined.
It's just a, just a thought, just a discussion. I don't feel strongly either way.
I, I would keep them as permitted then.
Just leave it permitted.
Permitted.
And default, please.
So what I'm gonna do is, so from this, so as we go through these and we, we, we discuss those, I'm gonna highlight, just so we, we will, when we go back to that part, we'll, I'll research and look at what we have now for the definition, just make sure that, that is defined. Same on the drive-through too, the, the one issue on the drive-through was the permitted, was not permitted next to a residential use district, which then eliminated the drive-through pretty much anywhere, so we'll have to look at those definitions when, when we, when we get to that part.
And I know when we started this process, you know, we, we talked and you, you mentioned Kim Littleton from OHM, I, I mean, like for me, I, I want, what, what works somewhere else, and I kind of want to take that and then like just tweak a, a couple of things. I mean, I don't want to rewrite, you know, the, the entire thing from top to bottom.
And.
And, and I know that you've already been working on that rewrite from top to bottom, I'm just saying, I, I mean, we have to get to a point where we're like, yeah, we're good with that, but I don't, I, me personally, I don't want to go through item by item and definition by definition and us approve, like, I mean, literally, I, I mean, there's, I, I mean, this is only part of the zoning code, and I don't want to approve word by word, line by line, what you're.
So when I came aboard.
What, what's, I mean, I know that we have to make, make a recommendation, right, to, to counsel, and, you know, we've got an obligation to know, understand or whatever, but I'm not, I've got no interest in going line by line with our zoning code and word by word, is that what your intent, is that what our intent is?
Not mine, I mean, I'd like to get it cleaned up, but I mean, I would still, you know, take bits and pieces from what works well and let's try to make it match, cause yeah, I guess, okay, well, then we get into all the approved businesses, which is then the subcategory of four pages worth of every type of business to go through, okay, well, you know, this, 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 but.
Here's something just to throw out to you, so when I started, I was focusing heavily on this rewrite, okay? And I wasn't paying much attention to our current because it's going away anyways, but since we've stretched, you know, we, we, of length in this time where we've been doing this, where I've been actually enforcing and looking at our current, our current code, our current code isn't horrible, it, it could have used tweaked, I don't, I don't know if it really intended to be the entire thing we wrote, one of those, one of those spaces.
I think from like, from just myself and my opinion, I think that we look to you as a staff member to say, okay, this doesn't make sense, this is what worked in, this is how we can get to better in our code, so everything isn't always going to be BZA, but that we have like the checks and balances and that it's, it's clear to understand, so I think I like how the new code has like tables and pictures to be able to show, but then also to make it, to keep us, our, being plain city and unique.
I, I, I agree with what you're saying, and I'm, I'm sorry, I agree with what you're saying, because I mean, for me, I look, I mean, I think that this, this panel, I think we're like looking at a higher level stuff, right, and like we're looking down, but the nuts and the bolts have to be sitting with you, our, our engineers, you know, working through. You know, working through the zoning code, and then obviously looking at tried and true stuff that works, I mean, because honestly, you know, we're only, confronted is not the right word, but, you know, with things that come through and these developments, and I'm not, you know, I, you know, I, I just think that we need to rely on.
Yeah.
Experts, e- either the two of you and/or what's worked in other communities, and we say, let's bring this and put that here, cause I really like what this community does with this, and I want to do that.
Yeah.
I don't like what the community does with that, but I, I like what that community does with that, and if we can take three or four pieces and put it together, I mean, that's it. I, I want to look at it at the higher level and say, yeah, it'll make sense.
I'll say this, though, I, the, the opinions and the advice that you've given, I have agreed with, so, so I, I did see some issues with the, the rewrite that I wasn't crazy. Yeah, and, and when you have come and offered suggestions, I have been in line with your suggestions, so.
And, and I think.
Which isn't a free pass.
This is like sad.
In this code, and, and I've never meant since, you know, the, when, the first time I read it and. In, in this code, and, and, and I've never meant since, you know, the, when, when the first time I read it and, and, and saw it had, you know, I, I knew, you know, head trade line, because I know all the hard work that's gone into it, and, and I'm, and never have I even, you know, even considered that this was bad or wrong, it's just, it was, for as long as I've been doing it, it was, it was hard for me to read. And if, if I can't understand it, no one else is going to understand it. You know, and, and I've written code, this is the first time I've ever worked with a company who's doing the code writing, I've always done the code writing myself. And, and I was interested in this that OHM came up with, but some of the codes that I are nearing neighbors that I really like their codes, that are recent and, and good, were also written by OHM, and I was, the drat, you know, the difference was, was kind of trying to figure out, okay, this is what they, this is kind of their niche, what they've been doing, and this was completely not similar to theirs, you know, and I don't mean that in a bad way, I just, it was just, um, it, it was, it was hard to read, and, and I think the same, I think the point in the, the idea of this and the ideas that, that, that I have and the ideas that other codes, I think it's the same, I think it's the same goal, I think it's there, it's just maybe how it's worded.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think, again, you know, our, our code is, you know, from, I, I mean, it's been pieced together from different times, but I mean, I mean, like, when, is it the eighties that it was, or even the fifties? I'm just saying that as we're going through, um, the growth that we're going through, I mean, the idea was to make sure that our zoning code was up to date. Um, the, the goal is to make sure that issues that were in the existing code were corrected for new development and growth. And, you know, again, to take and, and plug those pieces in, I don't want to recreate the wheel here, I don't. I, you've got, I mean, I, I'll sit here all night, but, you know, we, we can, you know, go line by line, but I, I, I think that, to me, that this is something, this is out, this is not what I envision us doing as a board, to sit and go line by line with conditional use, uh, permitted uses and that, and, and I think that we need to take whatever's broken in our code and say, we need to fix that, and there are things that are, you know, perfect in our code, but you can look at, you know, everybody hates when, you know, Plain City talks about Dublin, but Dublin does a lot of things right, and I find, I mean, whatever their code is, maybe that's the starting point, you know, but, but maybe, I want to take something that works somewhere and try to apply it here, and if somebody says, yeah, I really like that code, but I don't like that part, then we change that part. But I don't want to necessarily personally.
And, and I tell you, there, there are codes, there's codes out there that work and that are, that are updated and, and do, um, just for example, Marysville's code, I, I love Marysville's code, I do, and I say that right? I wrote the one that they replaced. So this one, this was even better, and they approved it, and I really, I, I truly think scaling it down to our, you know, to our size, as far as we don't, we don't need as many districts, they have so many districts, we don't need all of that. But I think as a, as a base, I really, I really truly think that would work here, it, they were set up log, legit, um, logistically similar, as far as, you know, they made the state routes and.
Oh, yes, well, I mean, like, I think that's where, like, our overarching concerns have been is, like, you would have done Alcott Drive differently, uh, lining it up to have something go. You still want to to go across, where, you know, and again, it goes back to, I think, the Virginia Homes presentation, making the, the smart choices of how do we line it up to the next subdivision or project, so that way, again, like you, you have that type of growth, how do you get, um, developers to do the corridor study versus the traffic, or a traffic impact study, because traffic impact study only accounts for today's traffic numbers, which aren't going to, like, take into consideration the next five.
Years from now, when, yeah, he said ten years from now, and what's that number going to be ten years?
Right, right, I mean, and so.
Explain that back, the, the, how the forecast, or the.
So, a traffic impact study, we actually do, we do a, a ten or a twenty year horizon. So we do look out that period of years. What he's talking about is background traffic, so, it's in this case, we'll use Virginia Homes since they were here tonight. We know that Oak Grove's been a group, they've got two hundred and thirty some homes, or whatever it is. It's not there today, so when they go out and put counters down and they count traffic on forty-two, at, where their entrance points are going to be, there's no traffic from Oak Grove, there's no traffic from Madison Meadows in there. So, we're going to tell them to include that as background traffic, meaning, they're going to add whatever, whatever the counts are on forty-two, they're going to add in another two hundred and thirty-five homes worth of vehicles coming to that access point. Going right or left, or straight across into the commercial, so they're going to have to evaluate that. We're doing the same thing on, um, for Madison Meadows too. We're, we're requiring them to put in the background traffic from the commercial development across the road that is coming, what, next month? No, not to Wilcox. Commercial, because they're studying verified. So they've got to put that in as background traffic, whatever the report, whatever the preliminary reports are from that, the, uh, commercial development gets added in.
Do you get that, traffic study?
Yes.
Good.
So, again, in, in, again, in Virginia Homes case, ODOT's going to review it, we're going to review it, and the county engineers are going to review it. And we're all three going to have feedback.
Good.
When we just did, we just had a meeting for the MOU on, um, on Wilcox property, and Brian, that's Brian Duke came in, and him and I sat down with Derek and Haley, and we went through it and said, what do we want in this study? And then we provided that back to them, and then they're, they're going to add that into their study.
Now, when you guys do the commercial, and this will go way probably in the weeds, is there just like a general average you take, do you take like the building size, and I'm just going to pick, because over on Alcott's going to be, um, operation, whatever, you know, they're, they're not going to really have inflow traffic, it's really going to be out versus, say, Perry Pike, if, you know, uh, let's say Chick-fil-A or all these, or, you know, something where you're obviously going to have a lot more in and out.
So there's, there's, it's called ITE, it's the International Traffic Institute. They have, they have charts, so they've been studying this for years, so, a new restaurant, a sit-down restaurant. Based on spur footage, will have X amount of cars in the peak hour. That, that sounds, I mean, same thing in a, uh, like a fast food restaurant would be the same. I mean, it'd be, it's numbers, but it'd be the same model, you look in the charts, and you look at spur footage for fast food, that's something cars to expect in that peak hour. Residential, same thing, if you've got apartment buildings, if you've got a, like, I mean, churches, churches would be ITE, schools would be ITE, all of these things have different evaluations within that ITE. Come out with new things about every ten years or something, they update it based on. So, we would, we always look at that, so if they submit and they say, hey, we use the ITE for, again, all this commercial, they're going to have to make wild guesses, they don't know who's coming into that commercial zone. So we have to look at it and say, okay, we anticipate this rough percentage of use, they're going to have some restaurant, they're going to have some, some retail, they're going to have maybe some business, maybe a doctor's office. And we so can, based on all of those different percentage uses, we look at the square footage, look at ITE, I make a projection.
Yeah, and I, I talked to Derek the other day, um, because I, I, like, when we did the Madison Meadows thing, I honestly thought, and, and Dusty remembered a different name, it's right, um, but I thought that there was like s- some requirements on Perry Pike, because all the traffic that comes from Madison Meadows, ninety percent is going to come Lafayette Plain City Road or Madison Way over to Perry Pike, and then they're going to go Perry Pike to the east towards Dublin, almost nobody is going to go to the south. And I thought, you know, even through those developments that we had, you know, that, that, you know, the traffic studies would have indicated that we need improvements at Perry Pike and forty-two, but that's not the case, so.
They weren't quite there.
But, but, but my, but my problem, and this is what I talked to Derek about, he said that they're working on a, a, a way to remedy this going forward, but they got a way stop-free. And now, um, as, uh, the Wilcox properties go in, and you start counting those cars, now they're going to be on the hook, or somebody's going to be on the hook for all of it, even though these neighborhoods contributed greatly to it, and, you know, through impact fees or whatnot, um, you know, those things, they have to pay their fair share. And that's kind of what I was saying about, I don't know what the traffic study is going to be, you know, for, for this, you know, but, you know, we talk about four entrances off of there, seven hundred and twenty some homes, commercial, I don't know what it says, I know that I want to see, um, you know, deceleration lanes and right turns in, and at a minimum, a center turn lane for the, that whole area, you know, um, anyway, this, this is not for that, I'm just saying that, you know, we, we need to think further ahead rather than, you know, just that one particular project, because I don't want other developments getting off stop-free. And I don't, I don't mean that derogatory, but it's just the way it is.
That's where the impact fees.
That, that don't yet exist, but we need, but we need, that needs to be a priority.
Yes. Yeah, because you're right, they, Madison Meadows essentially.
You said that they were far, this far away, and they, you know.
Right, they got off stop-free because their models didn't succeed and anything, and we couldn't point to, well, there's another development across the road that's coming in right, right now, and that you guys need to work together to figure it out. But if, if Wilcox is coming at the same time as Madison Meadows, and we knew that they were going to do Madison Meadows two, and, and we were able to, to do all that at the same time.
Well, now that Madison, I mean, are we requiring Madison Meadows to submit a traffic study that shows?
Madison Meadows has submitted a traffic study, I get to go back and look at the results on it.
Does it show a light at Perry Pike that needs at least a turn lane?
No, I do not believe so.
So I, I think that the biggest, like, going back to the code, the zoning code rewrite.
Is that where we're at?
Yeah. But, what this commission has been at length is really focusing on our subdivision, you know, what we, like, again, that, like, the lot sizes, the style of homes, density, that's what we have, like, spoke at length to, we understand that you need density for your retail, but we, I mean, I'm thinking, we're already going to be close to six thousand residents without this, so then you're at another seven thousand just with, with this.
And, and just remember.
Well, and that's, and that's with everything else, it's more.
And, and, and just remember that map that I shared with you all last month, I mean, it's, 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 whether it's us or someone else, forty-two and one sixty-one are going to be developed.
Well, I'm saying, that's not, we're, we're using numbers, we're not counting, like, the Pioneer Crossing and New California, that expansion that's now going to have.
So, this thoroughfare plan that we're going to come up with now, I mean, so it, it's going to be a lot more, obviously, two thousand sixteen, different circumstances than we are today, so, uh, I think big picture, best go around with this plan, is going to be extending well past in what we even think maybe that we're going to go. So, um, it's going to be a lot more detailed, and it will have that roadmap, so when these developments do come, we can hand it to them, say, here, do your traffic study, but this is your improvements that you're going to need.
Yeah, so, now, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, um, you know, what the mayor just said, I mean, she, she's right, I mean, we have focused on the, on, on the single-family residential developments. Why is that? Because that's what's coming in front of us, that's what we see, which is exactly why I say we need to use what works somewhere else, because we don't get the commercial development, we don't get all these other listings. My point exactly, we don't have those, but, so I, I mean, so nobody here probably has the knowledge base, I don't, to say, okay, I need to think about this when I think of something in the ITE, uh, this, you know, whatever, the development coming, I don't even know what that means. So I want to know what works somewhere else, and I don't want to be doing this again in two years when this comes, and we say, oh geez, I didn't, I, I didn't even think about that situation, and, you know, you've got use changes that are happening, I mean, you mentioned, um, um, Bridge Park, I mean, that's kind of a unique area, right, I mean, that's not something that, that wasn't a typical development at, at, at the time, you know, with the mixed uses and stuff, the way they did it, nobody foresaw that or could receive that happening that way, so how do we create a zoning code that, you know, that permits or allows or accommodates or whatever, that kind of stuff. But not having just a, a, a blank canvas or a, you know, you know, without any controls. And that's what I'm saying, that's why I said, what works for somebody else, let's do that, whatever we don't like, we'll change and fix that.
So, that's what I am encouraged about as far as the opportunities that we have and, and where it's coming, you know, so, uh, two, four years ago, or whenever, you know, Darby Fields, Darby Station, even as soon as Darby Station and Madison Meadows, I mean, it, just in that short amount of time, things have changed, um, you know, and, and so, you, we saw those developments coming as single-family houses, uh, but already, just the two between the Wilcox that we had in, the multi-use, or mixed residential use in this one, so now we're starting to see those different ones. So, this is where we're going to get, where we got to get creative and figure, there is going to be some give and take, you know, is, when, uh, Virginia first came in here, I mean, they, there was nothing, it was a clean slate, and maybe they had all residential, I don't know, so, you know, it's like, let's see something different, and, and, uh, you know, so what they brought us, um, it, it's different, so, I guess, what I think, where we need to be creative and flexible, maybe there, and maybe that be in code, maybe that be in policy, I don't know, but maybe it's, um, maybe there is some give and take, okay, this, if you do want a certain area percentage to be a little more dense, then what's the give up, maybe add double your green space, or, or that commercial aspect, maybe that is the, the give, to make things different, to mix things up, you know, so, um, that, I just, I, I don't want us, I don't want to have a code that's going to limit us where we're, even though we're being creative, it's going to require variance after variance.
Right.
Still, you know, so.
Get away with the PUD. Get away from the PUD yesterday, right?
Well, I, I love PUDs, I, I, I think PUDs need to be in there, in the code. It, it is, I, I, it is, it's crucial, but it is.
Derek, I don't mean to interrupt you, I'm kind of just explaining that, because I mean, like, you know, the position that we've been operating from, um, I mean, for the last year, I, I mean, like, you know, working with Taylor, it's been, you know, you have all these different PUDs, and now you've got essentially all these different sets of zoning codes you have to try to, to work with then. So instead of one set of zoning code that we have for the village, now we've got fourteen of those books, because there's all these different PUDs.
It's just like, write your own rules.
Right, I was going to say, I think that was kind of probably the collective thought was creating some sort of uniformity and blending of everything, because, you know, at, at least to me, when I came, it's like, each subdivision was doing their own thing, and, you know, it was like, well, wait, like, we have all these different things coming in, let's have something where it's like, hey, this is our, and, and, you know, this goes back to our residential side of going, what, this is our standard of what we envision or what we would like to see.
Because, because honestly, like, we're looking at, I mean, like, for, for this board, I mean, like, we look at the, um, um, the comprehensive plan, right? I mean, we look at the land, land use plans, we look at that, we consider that, we look at the zoning code, we look at different things, and ultimately, we just say, hey, does this look cool, does this fit in with the area, does this meet a need for the community, does this, you know, uh, address this concern or that concern, and then we give a stamp of approval. Somebody in your office is going to be the one that's going out and enforcing the zoning code when there's whatever violations, or you're the one when they come, that you've got to evaluate all of, all of that, right, Randy, and you guys, and you have fourteen or five hundred different, that's, I mean, for me, I, I'm just operating from a position of, hon- honestly, I, I, I couldn't care less if we had five hundred PUDs, because I don't have to enforce it, you guys do, you have to figure it out. So for me, it's not a challenge, I think for you was a challenge, and then, and then for us to restrict the next one that comes along, or to put.
Right, that's the problem, yeah, exactly, it's just created like a whole, you know, issue with us.
So, do we want every neighborhood to look the same?
I mean, not at all.
No.
Okay, so.
But.
But, a way to build creativity is by allowing the PUDs.
But like how I, I mentioned earlier when I started, we could set, so we could still set standards and minimum standards in a PUD.
See, that, that's what, I feel like we have a floor as our code, and what it feels like is a PUD going, well, we don't like that, we want to be down here in, in density for, for one.
Do is to go up instead of down.
Well, so, well, we set those minimum standards.
That's a floor, right, right, I, I don't want to see it below a floor, and that's what has happened.
Sure, so we, we could set those minimum standards, even in a PUD, that they can't go below, that's that threshold, they, no matter. They, no matter, they can be as creative as they want, but they're not going below that threshold.
I think that's where our zoning needs to be is.
Yeah.
And, and I. I don't, we call it density bonus. Um, you know, there's something because. Yeah, and we're just going to pick on this one because this is what we, you know, was presented and it's like. Hey, you know, you have this big park and, you know, you look at the stuff going, well, you know, you don't have enough green space. And, and that's going to be this whole give and take thing. And they might have a nice flow and, and everything else. And you go, well, you know what? You guys are short X number acres. Well, now all of a sudden, you know, it'd be nice to sit there and go. Well, this other community kind of blends and flows or ties in and go. It'd be nice if we could say, hey, you guys go look, you partner up or you something and say, hey. Now also we can take different ones. If they can work together, we can piecemeal and say. Here is our nice hundred acre park that we want because that's kind of our whole thing is we don't have. Some of these park spaces. Everybody wants, you know, this, this green space and, you know, we can have a nice little park here, but. You know, we have fifteen hundred houses here, but how many, um, baseball fields or soccer fields are we getting? For, for the residents because, you know.
Yeah, I mean.
Kids in, in sports right now, that's our challenge. We don't have the space.
And we could do, and we can incentivize those, you know, those, so you know, we could, uh, you know, if. There's a many, I mean, do we want to park in every single neighborhood? I mean, do we need a park in every single neighborhood? I mean, I, I don't know. I know a person rec doesn't want to park in it.
Park is, I mean, like, you know, in Dublin, you've got tons and tons of pocket parks.
Well, yeah, pocket parks. Yeah, and I'm not saying pocket park. I'm saying so far.
Do we, do we need softball fields or baseball fields or soccer fields in every neighborhood? The answer is a hundred percent.
No. It, but we, you know, the community needs that stuff, but we don't need them in there.
And, and that might be where, you know, Tyler mentioned this is, you know, twenty-one acres, sixteen percent open space. The minimum requirement I know is twenty-five. The, the neighborhood that it backs up to is at fifty-three. Darby Station's at fifty-four, fifty-two, one, one of those. I mean, they're high. Um, so when you, I, I think it is concerning when you have somebody that comes in and says sixteen, which is why they, why they mentioned it, you know?
Sure.
Um, I understand the density concerns in, 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 um, I mean, in reality, he, he's going to say that because the, the denser yard. The more houses you sell, the more money you make. There's also a point that he has to meet, right? I mean, there, there's, they're in the business to make money. So I mean, they have to meet something. But we have to balance our interest, which comes back to the green space and, and that. But that might be where you do the fee in lieu of. I, I, I don't know that, I'm not suggesting or whatever, but I mean, you do a fee in lieu of. And then, you know, they write us a check for a hundred thousand dollars, whatever that number is. And then that goes to, to build that other park, you know, that, that sports park or whatever.
And I got a problem with the, and our current code, our fee in lieu of is fifteen hundred dollars per acre. Um, I, I, I would say to go buy an acre. I say to buy an acre of land here, um, probably about fifty an acre. I don't know. I'm not, is this.
The concrete plant just spent eighty thousand dollars an acre for theirs.
Okay.
Eighty thousand dollars.
So I feel like that could be updated.
So, well, I can tell you, administration's looking at impact fees. They're looking at across the board, all of them. So they're going to change.
Yeah.
Uh, and obviously they're going to go up. Um, but you know, I, I don't, when I look at, when I look at this, this here. It, it does have, it is dense, you know, in, in those sections. I look at it overall, just how different the entire thing is. And I'm not, I'm not heartburned about the, the density on that, on this particular one. Now, if this whole entire site was that, I, yeah, I would be right up front saying, no way. Um, so I, that's where I think. You know, what would be the trade-off? I mean, I'm just saying, just, this conversation. Let's say he adds more green space. I don't know. What, I mean, what is, what would, I'm just asking you guys as a board. I don't know. Where's that? Is there, is there even a, even a trade-off at all?
For density?
Yeah, that, yeah, I mean, just for a partial section or half of a section or what? Is there even, I mean.
Well, the density, I mean, we've spoken at great lengths about, and there's not a simple answer. Mr. Harriman just mentioned a, a, a density bonus, you know, some, some way to incentivize or whatnot. Um, you know, the, the, the hard thing is, is, you know, and we've talked about it at length. Um, you know, there's many that have problems with the fifty, fifty foot wide lots. That creates a tighter density, but that's what also enabled that development to have a fifty-three or fifty-four percent green space. Okay, so I mean, i- 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 if we required a sixty-five foot lot instead of a fifty foot or whatever it is. That green space goes from fifty-three percent down to twenty-six percent or whatever that is. So there's always, you said there's always going to be a trade-off. There's always going to be a trade-off and we have to figure out what you're comfortable with.
Yeah.
Sixteen percent, no, we're not comfortable with. Is it sixteen percent? But then they're going to pay money to, to, so we can improve our actual park system. That's usable for the community, not just that neighborhood. I, I could get behind that. I, I mean, it depends on what it looks like, you know? If, if somebody felt strongly about density in this neighborhood and said, you've got to cut out. Um, you know, there's seven hundred twenty units. You've got to cut out a hundred and fifty of them. I mean, I, I, I mean, that, that's why there's five of us here and they, you know, we've, we've got to decide a, a, as a, as a unit, so.
They've, they've got, in Plain City, you've got the Darby running right through the town.
I heard that.
If you didn't know that. And it's driving, that's what's driving those conservation subdivisions. More so than code, more so than lot sizes. They have to meet the groundwater recharge. You can't meet groundwater recharge without having open space. So that's why they're coming in with conservation subdivisions. Because that's what works to get on that and still meet the number of units that they need to meet in order to finance, to make it, to make money. So I see that as an issue on this and that's why I mentioned, you got the Darby, make sure that you're giving groundwater recharge. There's other ways to do it other than just open space. But they cost a lot of money.
Like pervious pavement structure?
You, yeah, you got to do more, you got to do more pervious area.
Yeah.
So, okay, fine, brick pavement, the whole thing.
Yeah.
Pervious pavement on the whole project. It'll get, it'll help get them there. It's a maintenance issue, right?
Expensive.
If, if those roads are turned over to the village, they're going to, it's a different maintenance plan.
Yeah.
Right, so. Right, one that the village probably doesn't want to deal with. So if they want to do it on all the private parts of the commercial. And they want to maintain it, that can help them get perv- pervious pavers, all of those types of things. But in the residential subdivisions, they want to build roads, build houses, turn it over to the village. They need the open space. I don't see it back there.
Yeah.
So I, and unless they're going to get that credit somewhere else within the development. And, you know, especially this one, you know, you know, they show the open spaces, you know, one is the big path to go right through. Well, that's where the power lines go, like, you know, you're.
And you're right, but in fairness, I mean, you have the same thing in Darby Field.
You're going to see it everywhere, yeah.
Darby Station, there's power line.
He's got to do it.
I always just hate.
Yeah, and the problem with the density, I shouldn't say problem with the density. The thing that just stakes is we can sit there and say, hey, everybody has to have sixty foot lots and. The bulk through and come in and they'll do it, but now all of a sudden the houses become a hundred thousand dollars. More expensive and now you create, you know, another thing and, you know, I think, and I know that's what the builders are dealing with and. We're not the only ones. I mean, this is all of Central Ohio, so it's.
Small lots with open space though isn't always a bad thing. Because you, because that open space is available. It gives you the feel of. A bit of.
Well, because, because yes, we all say, I, I know, I live where my, I've got a big backyard that kids need to go out and play in it. But if you've got open spaces that are readily available, your kids can play in an open space too. And I think that's, I guess that would be my thing we need to define is. Uh, my definition, I guess if you want to help, open space or green space.
Yeah, we, we talk, yeah.
That's the big one because I, um, we'll pick on Darby Fields. And, and I forget how it was marketed, but I mean, I should like, oh, hey, we have all of this, you know, open space or green space. Like you said, to go, you know, not the same, you know.
Play football or whatever.
Play football, but when you look at it, well, you know, back, you know.
It's not maintained.
On the other side, it's all, you know, natural grass. So it's unusable, you know, so there, green space to use is a little bit there around Alderwood Circle. And, you know, maybe a little bit up front and it's like even along the bike path. And I kind of get by the road. You can have it be natural. It's like by going by the retention ponds where the houses end where it would be a good spot to play. It's, they just let it grow up and I'm like, I, I don't think you get credit for it. To me, I'm like, if you're going to sell those green space, I want it to be a place where, hey, I have a small lot, but let me go down here. Can throw the ball around and we can.
Yeah, I think repetitive opens, where active is where you can go use it passive is.
Just like a view.
The main thing is green space. That's the difference between the active and the passive.
Yeah, that's why I thought about usable, you know, green space, you know, so same, same difference. I mean, and it, it, you know, and it. Open space is, is good. Open space, let's say insane, nonusable open space is good because that's going to give them their retention, that, you know. Protect that, but we also should have that requirement in there usable or active space that's, that's required as well. So it's not, we're not just requiring open space. We're, we're both, both sides of it.
You got an open space requirement and, and of that open space, so much has to be.
And we can have those standards set in a P U D.
Right.
Where it's, this is your minimum.
Well, can, can we have that in the zoning code?
Oh, yeah, 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 absolutely.
I mean, to me, that's, that seems like that's one of those floor discussions.
Yeah.
It's per district, right? You might have a different open space requirement in the commercial corridor zone and then whichever.
And, 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 and you know, the realistic, the reality is, is, you know, as our existing village, it, it is what it is. There's not going to be much huge development. You know, there may be a few houses maybe eventually or something would be reconstructed. You know, so the, the focus needs to be on these, you know, our extending areas. So it. And so that's where we're going to have to be creative and really when we think about those minimum standards in those newer districts. And, and, and I know P U Ds are scared because that, that traditional P U Ds were like that. It was, it was. You write your own regs and, and nine out of ten times it was, you get as many houses in there as you can. The densities were high. But they have, they have changed so much and there's so much you could do with P U Ds now that. It, it's almost like another district. They still, gives them the flexibility to do some stuff and for the village or the city to be creative on what they're requiring. But you still, we still have those standards in there that they can't go below.
So, so you just mentioned the two words that I think are probably one of the most important to us, which is flexibility and creativity. Um, you know, do something big or something better, something more. Um, and, you know, and that code being flexible enough to accommodate without it being, you know, so restrictive that we can't or whatever. So again, you can call, you know, all, all these districts have all these different names and whatever you call whatever you want, but. P U D, whatever, you know, whatever works in that area, I mean, to me is just.
We could call, we could have Tom District over here, Brad District here, Tyler, Joe, we could have all kinds of districts.
That's okay.
I mean, from a, from a developer standpoint, Plain City is a dream because we are just wide. There's really, you don't have to move a mountain to develop anything. But on the same standpoint for us having these standards. You know, it's, it's hard to be creative when you're just.
Yeah.
Going through a farm field and, you know, there's nothing to really be creative to work through.
Yeah, so the creativity is, is going to be.
Has to be, they're designed to make it, you know, creative. And, and you know, like, like they said here, they were creative utilizing the existing woods to say, hey, we're going to try to incorporate that in here.
It's exactly what we said in Madison Meadows when they came in, uh, with, with their, their second, you know, Madison Meadows two. And that's, you know, we talked about, well, you know, we, we don't want to just keep rubber stamping all the way south to London.
Yeah.
Um, and, you know, we want that more, better, more, you know, and, and, and they're like, well, you, you know, we can't. The, the, the housing market won't support those prices in Plain City. And it's like, well, that's not true because look at Jerome Village. And then he's like, well, yeah, the Jerome Village has, we're being to the natural, you know, terrain or whatever. And I'm like. And that's where we said, well, that's where you have to be more creative. You have to create because we just have flat farm fields here. You're going to have to do something to set yourself apart.
I think that's, I'm sorry to jump in, but that was my thought process is if there is den- density, then we need the. The better building materials on the homes of like stone on the front and not just all vinyl and siding. And those architectural features that will make your, your neighborhood last.
It, it, you know, and there's a reason why, you know, M I Home chose a second development to do, you know? And a lot of communities, developers come in, build one and they're, and they're gone. You know, M I, uh, we just met with him this week. Uh, their new section, which they're higher in homes, we're talking seven hundred plus thousand. They're selling them faster than they could get the, the, the plans done for them. It, it's crazy. They, they, Darby Station is the number one selling for their company in San Ohio.
Those are seven fifty.
Madison Meadows.
Yeah, the next part of the next phase.
Next phase.
And they're already speaking, they're already being spoken for.
Madison Meadows, the same thing for, for D R Horton is their fastest selling development in the state of Ohio. Plain City.
Which is why we're talking about the dummy food, I guess.
I think we already, I think we already, it's done.
We solved the problem.
We solved it. All right, so.
Yeah, I, I spoke for me. You guys have to kind of weigh in on these two pieces of paper and you've got.
So last discussion out of there. Let, let me throw this out and, and. Don't, don't hold back. Tell me how you feel. Like I said, I, I, I'm used to doing the code writing, not relying on someone to do that. The O H M, we've already contracted, they're doing some stuff together. But in the meantime, before I get them, if, if I could give you some code section samples of, of, of what we're really talking about, the districts and, and uses. You know, is that something that you would entertain to, to look at and see what it looks like? Taking ideas from our draft that we have and some other communities that we're, that, that, that are successful, please. And see what that looks like. You know, I, I, I'm being careful because I don't want to. I know there's a lot of work going into this and, and, you know, and, and I don't want to say it was, it was for nothing, but. That's, I'm just, I want to be careful on how I present stuff to you because I, I don't want, there's, there's nothing.
For me, that's time already spent. We're, we're moving forward, whatever direction that has to go. So I mean. We, we can't get, whatever that time looked back and I'm not going to say, no, we're, we're locked into that. We're done because we already did that. We, we, we're past that. So.
But I, I think if.
Whatever we got to do, do the right thing for the village, which.
Yeah, right.
It made us stronger of like, unify of like what we expect to see going forward. I think it's like really of. To, to direct, you know, staff to say, this is what we want. Cause it really starts with you, Mr. Hutchison. When they come in to see, um, at the village first, like that's where there's been, there's been disconnect in previous years, I feel like. Where we have our opinions and staff has their own opinions.
And.
And trying to align those, is that what you're saying?
Is that what?
And we're hoping to align those, is that what you're saying?
Right, I think we're trying to, yes, to make sure that, you know, like, so that Mr. Swain keeps agreeing with you. But, but that we, that we get our residents' concerns brought forward too. Even though I know you and I've had many conversations of like each subdivision that comes in, it's not built for current people. But we also want them comfortable with the neighborhoods and what products we put our approval to.
Clearly, we're doing a good job.
Cause there's so many hot gigs out there, right? So.
But I would, and this very, you could probably correct me, but I feel like at least my impression being on, working with you guys. Just actually working with you and then going up to council, like I feel like. We all collectively, I think are trying to put, you know, hey, we, we know the growth is coming. We want a high standard. We want, you know, give us a good product, give us something different. We just don't want these cookie cutter, you know, fifty foot. Lots and four by, you know, four foot side. You know, from your neighbor for your setbacks.
Because on the setbacks, talking, um, our fiber marshal, they have to approach fighting a fire in a house, you know, with, with. Smaller setbacks and everything. So that is something that we need to take in, take consideration. Because our fire district will have to grow as well, but we want to make sure that, that we're not outgrowing them.
Well, with all their money, they can just get longer hoses. Longer ladder trucks maybe.
Well, I mean, I, I think they've already kind of been on record with saying, I mean, you know, especially in those houses, you know, with the narrower blocks. I mean, they're, they're focusing on the neighbor's house and not your house.
Which is.
And, and, and that's just the unfortunate reality, right? I mean, uh, you know, you're, you're trying to keep the, the neighbors from burning down at that point, so. Which, I mean. It, it, it kind of is what it is and, and you know, I.
People out and save the other houses.
You know, we've not always been a hundred percent on the same page, but to me, the, you know, the, the market kind of drives a lot of, of what happened. kind of drives a lot of, of, of what happens, you know, I mean, we can have all of our wants and desires and we will continue to push those, but the market still drives that to a, to a large degree. I mean, they're going to, you know, the buyers are gonna decide what's important to them. Now, I understand that it's the only option that they have.
Yeah.
That they're, and, and that's however you're going.
Oh, yeah.
But if it's the only option that they have, then, yeah, they're just gonna take it because it's, the only thing's there. Uh, but, you know, if, if they're, you know, if they have that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar house or the three hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, they're gonna now have a choice to make, which again is why we keep pushing more and better and different and create the, you know, creativity and uniqueness and all that, and we're gonna continue to do that, but, but still, I think the market does drive it. I mean, you know, that they're gonna do, they're not gonna come and try to, you know, I mean, spending, whatever I said, eighty thousand dollars an acre, you're, you're not gonna be able to put certain products on that. I mean, it, it's gotta be, you know, of, of a certain dollar amount or a certain density, or it just doesn't work. I mean, somewhere along the line, I mean, e- economics have to play in, so I mean, they're, they're going to decide what they can sell and they, they do that because they sell thousands and thousands of homes around central Ohio and they, you know, kind of.
We haven't seen the edge of the market here in Plain City though, because everything they're building is the same. Yeah, they're selling, but I definitely think there's room that we can.
Well.
Push.
Trends, trends are, I, I follow trends nationally, especially here in Ohio, and, and we are starting to see lots widening up, I, I don't know, well, we will eventually get back to where maybe people are wanting these one acre, half acre lots, it's gonna be a while, but, uh, I mean, we were already talking to developers now on potential land out, just outside the city, that the first half of their, their developments, eighty foot lots. That's starting out.
It, it just passed, I mean, you, you just gotta at least.
Now, that same development has a, does have a smaller section that has some fifty five or sixty foot lots, the smaller. But.
But options.
Options.
Exactly, that variety.
That was one of the things that we thought we did, one of the exercises we did, we, we took.
Yes.
We went through and like did the, the mapping and we like measured different lot sizes, I mean, like in the different neighborhoods and, and you can even see in Darby Fields, like on Red Dot Court, those, the cul-de-sac there has some considerably large lot sizes, and then there's some smaller ones through, but even in all the other suburban residential neighborhoods, you have some ranch houses mixed in with, um, two, you know, two story and, but it flows.
But it, and, and I forget if they brought up, well, I think, uh, they did, where they said, hey, you kind of go down the one row and it's just a single row of houses.
On one side.
On one side, which makes it look completely different as opposed to just driveways all lined up and it's like, to me, I go, okay, I'll give you a little bit, you can be a little, I'm not saying at all, but, you know, you can have some of those tighter ones, you know, if you do that and then it's like you had a, and I'm just saying like more of like a bigger park in the middle that now you have that, a little extra green space between those houses in the back, and so your property lot may be that small, tight, you know, however many square, square feet, but perception looks like a lot bigger than what it is. And that, to me, that's the developer coming in saying, hey, you know, we, we hear you, we're giving you, we, we're gonna put in the tighter lot, but we're gonna make it look a lot bigger than what it is.
And that's done by doing the PRD.
Well, yeah, and again.
It works, you wanna have your four acres, you don't want less than so many spurt foot a lot, but.
Right.
To create, to be able to create that flexibility on one street to have multiple options.
Sure.
To create that, that PRD process. And that's what we had, you know, expressed to Taylor when she was here, I mean, I mean, you're that, like the mayor said, you're the first point contact with, with those developers, so, I mean, like the first words out of Darius and off for us, we hope is, you've got, they, the, the, the plan is under contention, wants more, bigger, different, better, unique, creating, all those things, come, come with the, the best, knock it out of the park. If, if you want them to entertain it, knock it out of the park.
And, and, you know, I tell you, that's what I like about, you know, so we're not even to a preliminary stage, it's just the concept, and that's what tonight, I think, was, was awesome, I mean, every, all the points you guys brought up to this developer, um, so I'm excited to, I, I'm gonna get a phone call tomorrow, then you'll call and discuss how I thought it went and, and, and be able to share what we've talked about afterwards too with him and to see what he brings back to the table is gonna be exciting. Um, you know, I could be wrong, it could be just a tweak here and there, but I think, I really feel that it's gonna come back different, uh, that green space, I think, is going to, um, is going to open up, so, um, so I'm excited to see that, um, I think, I don't have that map pull up, I think just everyone who lives on, along the outside of that, if your backyard backs up, you just need to put up a really tall fence.
And, you know, the, the other thing we're starting to get with these developments is the ones that have come in, or we'll pick kind of MI, you know, Darby Fields, you know, Darby Station, you know, they've kind of been out and away, Meadows, you know, is, was kind of the first one actually built in to neighborhood. You know, all the other, the ones that have been approved have kind of been these one offs of just, hey, you know, here's the field, and they haven't really tied into it, and, and that's where, you know, when we're talking Virginia Homes going like, I, I, I'm, I wanna be hard, I don't wanna say hard on them, but say, hey, you guys are tying in to the existing neighborhood, and at this point, we know a lot of growth is coming and there's properties around, there's the other development across the street, it's like, we gotta start piecing, putting this puzzle together to make it, you know, look, look good. All right, so we're on to agriculture.
I was waiting for it, I was waiting for it. Okay, so, let's do that, let, let me bring something to, to the table and, uh, to take a look at, taking everything that I know that, you know, this board has discussed and take what we have created in this draft and let me, let me just give you some examples of what something would look like. Uh, OHM is working with some stuff too, uh, from all of our comments, I gave it all the comments from our last, from our January meeting, so they're putting that all on their samples, and, you know, I, I think if, if we could give them some examples of actual, what the code looks like instead of them creating something from just ideas, I think it, it streamlined definitely quicker, you know, if we give them here, this code section with these tweaks, this is what we like, and it would, you know, be pretty quick, so. All right.
I guess going back to your opening, uh, number one was, um, the work sessions.
Yes, so, yeah, and, yeah, so that'll be up, uh, up to you guys on, on when, when we do that. Um, being just a straight discussion, um, we just have to do that seven day notice, so we don't have to do a thirty day notice for, for, because it's not a public hearing, um, still it's an open discussion for the public as well, um, but, uh, I, I think if we, we, we need to start adding one, and just because of the stuff we have coming up, our regular meetings, we're not, we're not gonna have time, well, we would have time, we'll be here a lot later, we are now discussing zoning code and stuff, so these work sessions will be more just focused on the zoning code, on getting that wrapped up, uh, so we can leave our monthly, normal, regular meetings just for.
And can we, and I, I contribute probably more than anybody on, on, on this going longer, um, but you say focused and I, and I really think that we have to be able to focus and not have such wide open discussions. If we're gonna have the work session and it's gonna be zoning code, I mean, I really wanna be able to focus.
Well, that's what I was hoping with tonight. You do that one.
I'm sure we didn't work to the length of this, but. Acknowledge.
He's on this.
Yes.
Um, but yes, I, I will, I mean, if we're gonna give more of our time, I wanna make sure that it's focused because it's.
Yeah.
It, it's a premium.
And, and there's stuff, there's so much stuff in there that, you know, we don't know, I mean, especially some, a lot of the conservation standards and, I mean, just going off the other one, like, I can read it, but I have no idea if that's what it's supposed to be.
Which is a thousand percent why I say I wanna take something that already works somewhere.
Yeah, exactly, so it's.
There's stuff that I just don't know and I'll read it and I'll understand it, but until it gets applied to a specific project or there becomes a problem, I'm not gonna know, so I, that's why I say I wanna, I wanna use what works somewhere.
And there's, and there's some parts of the code that we could actually take out and refer to a policy, so, we're talking to Randy, Randy, uh, looking at our construction side of it, you know, the specs, um, some of those things change and, you know, and, and, uh, right now, we go like Columbus guidelines, but stuff can change, kind of, yeah, but we could take that out and actually refer that to our code. Our code could refer to a manual or, or to, uh, you know, a policy where if changes are in that, it doesn't have to go through the whole entire process again.
And we kind of had that discussion of the stuff where it's like, in a way, can we pull out some of that stuff and say, hey, just, you know, for this one, for obscene, untechnology is different, hey, just reference this section, so it's not always, you know, when it changes or if it's a yearly change or, or however often, it's like, we don't have to, and just, you wouldn't have to go through the whole code update of, you know, thirty day notice come through us, then we talk about it and it goes to.
Public hearings.
Public hearings to council, you know, and it, of something is like, we can pull it out to make it a little more streamlined.
Yeah, and, and, you know, speaking of streamline, I don't know where this fits into this, but, you know, we, you know, we've talked a lot about administrative approval on stuff, you know, that, that can happen at, at staff level that seems to come here and where like we talk about it to no end where it's, it, it's a lot of stuff that can be handled administratively.
Perfect example is that lot split, just now, uh, it, per, I, I, I don't know if you've ever seen, had you guys ever seen a lot split come before the board? Per code.
Do we have lots splits?
I haven't.
I mean, I wanted on.
I don't think it'd be ten year, yeah.
I know that the applicant claims that he had it done before and never had to come to the board. Our code specifically states that it, it has to, but also our code does not specify a lot splits either, it's a minor subdivision, which requires all of them to come to the front of this board. Um, those type of things like for, for act that, that honestly, I, I wouldn't, I would not have wanted to bring it.
Right, and, and those, but that's a good example, and that stuff that, I mean, I would rather not be, I mean, you, you already told them the challenges that they're gonna face, they're gonna come here, we're gonna say, no, you can't do this because of X, Y, or Z, and they're gonna have to change their plan, whatever.
So, I think what you're, what, what I'm hearing from everybody is that you, we want you, Mr. Hutchison, to say, here's my recommendations, here's my changes that I would make to the current zoning code, and then we could either, you know, collective, like, go through it and agree or disagree and get the changes and then that, that way it would get us closer to that.
The only thing I would add to that a hundred percent, the only thing I would add to that is not just what you want, but what you want based off of what you know works from other communities.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I, I, I wanna see that it's worked somewhere else or know that it's worked, I don't want to see it, I wanna know that it's worked somewhere else, it's been successful, and then, uh, you know, exactly what she said, that I don't wanna go line that line through this and, I mean, I, we, we paid, um, OHM, you know, a lot of money to do just that and we've got you guys that are more knowledgeable than I am, and I want to speak to you guys. More, more on this than not really that's.
So, do you wanna set a work session?
Yeah, so do you, yeah, what we wanna do at least for, for March, do we wanna go ahead and set that date now?
I mean, it sounds like with, what's on the docket for our meeting on March is probably not going to be one we wanna add anything extra to.
Not that day, it'll be like a week before, I think is what you were saying.
Right.
Is, is that, is that what you kind of?
Yeah, sometime before, yeah, at some point, but, you know, and, and, you know, and, and we could, being a work site, we can change the time, I mean, if we wanted earlier or, or, you know, so I think we can be a little flexible on that. And we're, and we're gonna get attendance, I mean, we're gonna get, obviously, we're gonna get public interaction and stuff with that, but, uh, um.
I have Wednesday, the eighth.
Is that what you're thinking?
Would that give you plenty of time to pull stuff together for the, the zoning code?
Yeah, yeah, and I should have something from OHM as well, for that as well, so.
Are you, are you in town?
Uh, I will not be, I forgot I'm gonna have to be working that week.
Okay.
We could put your, put your face up on the big screen and you can just join us virtually.
Yes.
From, from the plane?
Are you?
Yeah.
We'll be, we'll be on a trip somewhere.
You got on that whole week?
Uh, that whole week.
The whole week.
What, or?
What about, I was gonna say the first, is that?
That's the council, that's council work session.
We could cancel, we could cancel that, right?
Yeah.
We could bump them.
Well, I mean, it doesn't necessarily have to be a Wednesday, right, and we can look at a different day. I mean, I don't.
Or Tuesdays.
Tuesday, the twenty eighth, that would be.
Tuesday, the twenty eighth of February?
Yeah.
February?
Uh, uh, are you available that week?
Yes.
I could do Tuesday or Thursday.
Yeah, but the, the, you're, the twenty eighth, I mean, you're talking like thirteen days, is that, I mean, that's not gonna give you the time that you need to do to get your stuff together.
Well, I'm just not gonna do anything else, just that.
Then why not me?
Does that, and that gives us plenty of time to advertise the meeting, yes.
The.
The work session.
Yeah, but I didn't know if it gave him enough time to pull things together. So, so, I mean, do we look at the seventh instead or?
He, Tyler's not available that week.
That won't leave him.
So, so the seventh or the eighth would be fine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Fourteenth.
Well, I'm guessing I've got, um, BZA, person.
We just threw this out there, what about a, like a day meeting during the day?
Two P M, I mean.
I was gonna say.
What day?
What day works for you?
Gosh.
Well, I know, and then Dustin's not here either, that's one thing.
There's zero chance.
Can we do it five o'clock? Would that?
Five?
Or five thirty?
Anytime, I mean, I could do evening too, I'm just throwing out there just to, to make it, if, if a day would fit someone else's schedule better and.
Usually if I don't have a flight, I could be here nine, yeah. Nine, if you want.
Yeah, twelve hours?
Why don't we just all go on that, why don't we just all go on that trip and we could do the meeting there?
That's right.
I mean, we could shoot for the twenty eighth, I mean, it, I'll have something, I mean.
Is the twenty eighth good for you?
I could do twenty eighth.
Yeah.
I have a four to four thirty, so sometime after your five or something.
And we could do the, the normal time if you want or.
I think a five o'clock would be nice.
Five, I could probably make that work.
As, as long as it doesn't go until nine seventeen.
So, we would not have dinner there.
Okay, so.
Store some pizzas and.
So, we, well, let's just schedule it nine to seven, or five to seven.
Five to seven on the twenty eighth of February.
Yeah.
Yep.
I could do that.
Tuesday, the twenty eighth. Got it.
Two meetings right in the road there.
Okay. Anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, third.
Hi.
You, you're gonna send something out on that, I may at least.
Oh, yeah, 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 um, do you all wanna see? Well, please.
Yeah.